Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the Board of Commissioners meeting, the June 15, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting, and so order. We don't have an overhead mic tonight, so I'm going to remind the board to speak up a little bit. For those of you in the back, there's a couple chairs up front if you want to come up front. I'll just try and remind everybody to raise their voice a little bit tonight. Normally, we do an invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Our pastor couldn't be here tonight, and I would invite anyone in the audience, if they would like to do an invocation this evening, please come forward. And if there's no takers on it, I'll get Commissioner Beaumont to do it this evening. With all that's going on in the world, it seems like we definitely need as much as we can get.
Father, we gather before you this day, Lord, for this county commissioners' meeting. And, Father, in a season of turmoil and unrest, Father, we cry out that your hand would be upon this county, this state, this country. Father, I pray that everyone would have a spirit of love in their hearts, a spirit of understanding of what their neighbors are going through. Father, I pray that you would guide us during this meeting, Father, that you would help communication be clear, that we would be able to execute decisions and rulings based upon the best interests of this county at heart. Father, bless this gathering. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Paul. Right, and I'm going to move to make a couple changes to the agenda this evening. Need to add a closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A3 to preserve attorney-client privilege in the matters of Kirtuk v. Latendra and Kirtuk v. Casa and Paradise Holmes. And, of course, as always, that will go after our regular scheduled meeting. Also need to amend the agenda to add two budget amendments to the consent agenda to fund the Owo Kirtuk Volunteer Fire Department insurance and retiree insurance.
Make a motion, please, agenda.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. First item of business this evening is public comment. I have, I'll just stand up so you guys can hear you, two people signed up, Andy Deal. Please come up to the left hand, sir. Are you here to speak on public comment or an agenda item this evening? Because I see you signed up-
Well, it's about an agenda item, but it's not a public hearing, so I figured this was the time to speak.
Okay, yep, thank you.
It's about the drainage study that the county had commissioned for-
Yes.
All right, my name's Andy Deal, I'm with Deal Engineering, and I performed the drainage study a number of years ago that was the basis for, or one of the bases for forming the Moyac Drainage District. So it's, and since then, I've done a lot of drainage work in northern Kirtuk County. And the, I just became aware of the study that was commissioned this afternoon when I had, when a copy of the agenda was sent to me. So this drainage study was commissioned to explore the impact on developers, or on development, of changing the county stormwater rules from mitigating a 10-year storm to a two-year wooded condition, changing from that to being a 500-year storm to a two-year wooded condition. And I reviewed the study. Kim Hamby certainly has a strong reputation as a drainage engineer. What I read generally makes sense to me, the work that was done. But the reason that I felt compelled to come up and speak is because I don't think we're asking the right question. This study is about what impact this rule change would have on developers, but we're not asking what impact will this have on the problem that we're trying to fix. And my sense of it is that it's not going to have much of an impact. We can't pass rules to replace infrastructure and maintenance problems that we have existing Northern Kirtuk County is a very complicated place in terms of drainage. Everything from Sligo north to the state line, we have a drainage way, major drainage ways that are interconnected through farm ditches, so we have interactions between the, between different drainage systems. And those interactions change for different-sized storms. You may have, you know, the classic is, we may have ditches that flow one way during a storm and then start flowing another direction, just based on what's happening in the surrounding creeks and out in Northwest River. The county, if the county is serious about addressing the stormwater problems we have in the northern part of the county, we need to actually define what is going on. And this would mean a comprehensive study, a comprehensive model of the northern part of Kirtuk County's mainland, so we can understand how the Northwest River impacts Shingle Landing Creek, how Shingle Landing Creek impacts Moyac Drainage District, how our new development to the Moyac mega site is going to impact Shingle Landing Creek. When we're asked as engineers to do a design for one of these things, we look at that entity, we narrow our focus. These things interact, and we really, as a county, need to look at the whole area and see how these creeks interact with each other and identify what actually will make a difference. Because the proposal of changing from 10 years to 500 years, it'll have an impact, but we don't know if that impact will be proportional to what we're asking to have changed. Thank you.
Thank you. David Clubbets?
Good evening, everybody, members of the board. My name is Dave Clubbets. I'm an engineer with Bissell Professional Group. I'm obviously also here to talk about this particular item. First, I'd like to say that I'm not here to express any concerns regarding the details of Ms. Hamby's report. I'm here to more just support what Andy was talking about, and that is the basis of the report and what the intent of it was. In my opinion, I feel like it's not the solution that the county is really looking for. In some ways, it's impractical, and in other ways, I'm not even sure how it's possible, to be honest, but, you know, that's getting into the weeds. You know, I would hope that, you know, the board and the county would reconsider their path on how to solve the drainage issues that are going on, especially in the Moyac area. And the way that I feel and others feel, the appropriate way to do that is to actually perform a comprehensive drainage analysis of the area, much like the city of Virginia Beach has done, the city of Chesapeake is currently doing. It's not until you do that analysis and really understand where the problems are and come up with, you know, a capital improvement plan to help solve the existing conditions, but also write a new stormwater management ordinance that is supported by the actual data that you've gotten from the analysis that you've done. I understand that that process can be really expensive, but I think that it's the appropriate thing to do, not just, you know, come up with a theoretical scenario and require that as, you know, your design parameters for subdivisions and things moving forward. So anyway, that's my two cents on the item. Again, I'm not here to criticize the report, I just wanted to take this opportunity to comment on what the report was about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. I don't have anyone else sign up for public comment this evening. Is there anyone that would like to speak to anything tonight? All right, seeing no one, I will close public comment and move on to commissioner's report. I think one of the things I'm going to touch on tonight, as probably everyone in the room knows, this Board of Commissioners decided to move forward and have our Fourth of July celebration. We've gotten some nasi gram emails from people, and I think for myself personally, I know Commissioner Beaumont commented on that email today, we are steadfast as a board in wanting to do this Fourth of July. And I think it's important to understand the reason that we have Independence Day and the reason for the celebration. And everyone seems to have forgotten that the founding fathers, those people that stood in that room and signed up document and put themselves at odds with what at that time was a, was a superpower with England, everything, their family, they sacrificed everything to make this country. We can stand in a field and watch some fireworks if we want to, and they gave you the right to have that choice, the right to write an email that you didn't, that we may not like, but that is your right to do so. And so I think it's very important that we remember why we have the Fourth of July. So many of our holidays get lost now, you know, Memorial Day, half the people probably don't even remember or know why Memorial Day is. It's just a day to grow out, go to the beach, if you live around here, get on the water. We have a lot of veterans here, I know they know what that's about. So I just, it really bothers me that people don't really understand the intent and the spirit of that day anymore. And just as a general note to the general public, the board met at four o'clock here today to talk about Kirtuk Station, that has been something ongoing since 2014, that we have been trying to get that done. So we've got that on the agenda tonight, but we did have a work session on that this evening. As always, those work sessions are open to the public. If you pay attention to these things and want to come to those, we encourage you to do so and help understand why and how we make the decisions that we do as a Board of Commissioners and shed some light on that. Oftentimes, people don't understand why we did something one way or the other, and had you been here, you might, you might be able to do that and maybe help set the record straight when you're out in public. That's all I have for myself this evening. With that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Payman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple things, reiterate what Chairman White had mentioned about our freedom and the fireworks. I think the board was unanimous on that, I as well. If you don't want to go, stay home, but I think it's important to celebrate that day. I am also, I sit on the Alabama Regional Health Board, and we constantly discuss our area, our concerns, the COVID situation, and we've had discussions with them regarding the fireworks and other activities, and they're just, follow the guidelines, be careful. Yeah, they're like everybody else, you know what to do. I thought you said you could hear me, sorry about that. So again, you know, the county's doing with the reports out there, I think case-wise, we're doing the right things. I think the latest report, we had 16 active, we had 16 cases, one active, and 15 of those recovered, no deaths in the county, even with the influx of tourists and activity that we've had in the county. So again, like I said, just everybody, just, you know, be smart and practice, if you're comfortable with a mask, put it on. And also with the fire departments, activities picking up, traffic's picking up. Remember your volunteer fire departments out there. If you can get involved, get involved, they're always looking for more, more help, whether you just can get out there and hold signs or actually get involved with the fire departments. You know, traffic accidents is really increasing this year. I know the fire departments have had an active year with structured fires this year as well too, so support your local fire departments, they do a lot for us, and like I said, they appreciate any help they can get, and that's all I am going to talk about tonight, so thank you.
I'd like to swing the mic to your left there. Call Miss Kitty next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On this coming Thursday, June 18th, Operation Love Thy Neighbor will be distributing Foodline gift cards in Corolla and Knox Island to county residents who have been affected financially by the COVID-19 pandemic. The event starts at 9:30, the first come, first served, and it's a drive-through. You must show your county ID to receive the Foodline gift card, and it will be held at Corolla Fire Department, 827 Wellhead Drive, and also in Knox Island at 327 Knox Island Road. This is for the citizens of the Outer Banks and also Knox Island and the Gibbs Woods area. And again, I'd like to thank the citizens who made this possible by giving donations to those who were affected so by this pandemic. And again, I'd like to say thank you and ask that God would bless our great nation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Beaumont?
Two things. One, I had the pleasure of the official receipt of Moyac's new fire engine, and as a typical male, gosh, toys are cool, and that one's pretty darn nice. So nice addition, right, in a very busy district, so we look forward to seeing that on the road. I guess a month is what, basically, by the time we get it outfitted and everybody trained, about another month, and then, actually, hopefully, we won't see it on the road at all, but good to see that in the fleet, certainly capability that Moyac's been limping along with. And then the second thing, had the pleasure of attending graduation for our 2020 seniors at Kirtuk County High School Thursday night. All I can say is, and I had a graduating senior, so, you know, what a bizarre end of 12 years of education to come to the way that one ended Thursday night. I can tell you that those kids lost a lot of stuff that every high school student plans on experiencing, from a full basketball season to a baseball season to the prom to, you know, of course, one of them said senior skip day, not that mine ever would have done that. And yet, to come together for a graduation, and I got it in my hands off, or hats off, to Dr. Matney and the Board of Education, they pulled it off, in my opinion. You know, the seats were spread out and the, you know, social separation, good, bad, or indifferent, they did a pretty darn good job in laying that out. But the other thing that they took a bit of heat on was, you know, quote-unquote violating the governor's orders. All of those students and families had three options: attend the graduation that 240 kids attended on Thursday night, a smaller private ceremony that you could have had, and then the third option was just to go pick up your diploma. So again, in the spirit of Independence Day, we all get to weigh risk in our lives, and the risk that those kids decided to do was it was better to be there with their classmates, it was worth the risk. And 2020 will go down as one of the most interesting years in my short life, pun intended. But anyway, kudos to the 2020 grads, wherever they are and whatever they're doing. Who'd have thought we'd have seen times like this? That's all I got, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. McCord?
I too also attended the, I guess, the reveal of the new fire truck with Commissioner Beaumont today. And like I said, boys and toys, nice truck, and it's been needed for a while up there. I guess they had a situation happen. That was this afternoon. The fireworks thing, you know, if you feel you're at risk, don't attend. Watch from your yard, if you live in Idlet, or from the sound. You know, we made this choice, and like I said, in this great nation that we live in, and, you know, you can't be scared of everything. I'm not saying that, you know, everybody has to go, but like I said, I'm glad we're doing it. Kirtuk County is a trendsetter, out of one of the 100 counties, one of the 100 counties that we have. We were the first one to do a real graduation. Kudos to the school board. Some people, they love to go on these things and trash talk and give their little two cents of opinion, you know, and that's fine, that's why it's a free country that we live in, and they can do that, but the school board and Dr. Matney and all the staff and the Sheriff's Department, the EMS, all the guys that, I mean, everybody put a lot of planning, a lot, and it went perfect. It went really, really good. I'm glad that happened. Like Commissioner Beaumont said, you know, I have one that graduates next year, but I would have hated it for those kids, they lost out on so many things, baseball, prom, seniors, like he said, same thing. Traffic, traffic's busy on the weekends, it's always busy on the weekends this time of year. Memorial Day to Labor Day. Drive safe, wear your seat belts, be smart. You know, the wrecks and everything, I worked this weekend, the roads were crazy busy, but like I said, for the most part, everybody was pretty behaved. Pretty much that's it. So kudos to the school board, though, for the graduation. I'm really glad that we were the first ones that did that, and I know there were some people mad about it, you know. Sit back, have a soda and get over it, pretty much, so thanks.
All right. Mr. Chairman.
Speaking of the fireworks, I asked myself this question. What if the founders had the same attitude of fear that so many have about COVID-19, instead of caution of the inherent risk they were going to be facing as they took on Great Britain? We have to ask ourselves the question, if they had had that fear instead of caution, would we be sitting here tonight exercising the freedoms that they gave to us? And in that light, the seniors are what drove the desire to have a normal graduation. And I commend the Board of Education, Dr. Matney, and everybody else that helped put that together. Sitting there Thursday night, watching those seniors come across that stage, and the smile on their faces as they exited the stage said all that needed to be said, that they had reclaimed some bit of normalcy to what has been a very tumultuous year. Being able to hear the two vial of Victorians and the salutatorians give their addresses that they have worked so hard to be able to be in that situation to do was well worth sitting there and listening to it, because they gave excellence talks, and it gave me hope that our future will be in good hands with kids like this coming forward. I appreciate what this country means to each and every one of us. We should all appreciate it, and the fabric of our country is being torn now like it's never been torn before, or at least in the last 100-plus years. If we don't wake up and exercise our freedoms and understand that if we sit back and let somebody else talk for us, where will we be a year from now? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Last, but certainly not least, Mr. Jarrod.
I just want to reiterate what Kitty Etheridge said about the Love Thy Neighbor distribution that we're going to do. I would like to thank everybody who's donated to make this possible. I would say, if you haven't donated, to please donate. We would like to do another distribution later in the summer, if possible. It is, it was heartwarming and heartbreaking both to see the people that showed up the first time, they were so appreciative, and I know that there are people that are hurting in the Gibbs Woods and Knox Island locations, as well as on the Outer Banks, that will appreciate this as well. And since we're all talking about patriotic happenings, I just want to quote the Declaration of Independence, which gave us that date, when it says, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed with certain inalienable rights by their Creator, which among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." With all that's gone on in the last week, I think those words need to ring to every American. And by holding to those principles, we as a country can overcome this divisive time that we've had. We've done it ever since July 4, 1776, and I know in 2020, we can do that again. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the County Manager Report. Mr. Stackler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to be fairly brief tonight. Only thing I want to do address is, we've had some questions come in about the canceling of our softball, baseball, T-ball season for the county rec department while there are travel teams that are playing here at the field. The primary reason for canceling the season actually wasn't the COVID issue, it actually revolved around the lack of interest that we had. I'm sure that that was caused by COVID, but just to give you guys the numbers, and I know we've got several folks who have coached Little League, baseball, softball, that kind of thing, so you'll, you'll know what that means, but for T-ball, we had 44 people sign up. For seven, eight-year-old baseball, we had 30 people sign up. For nine and 10-year-old baseball, we had 30 people sign up. For 11 to 13-year-old baseball, we had 19. For seven and eight-year-old softball, we had 16. For nine and 10-year-old softball, we had 18. And for 11 and 13-year-old softball, we had five. So, I mean, as you, if those of you all are familiar, I mean, some of those, it's not enough to fill the single team, and in most of those cases, it'd be just enough to fill two, maybe three teams. And so with the amount of time, with the fact that it was going to be a crunch season, and just the lack of interest we had, and like I said, I'm sure that was driven by COVID. I mean, you know, when that signup season was going on, you know, normally, we would send something out through the schools, and so all of that probably contributed, but we then couldn't double up seasons because of the workforce that it takes to put on other athletic programs later in the year. So I just wanted to clarify that, I know there were some questions in the community about why we as staff opted to make that decision and why they're still playing ball for the travel teams, but it really was just a lack of signups and trying to maintain so that we could do other seasons. There's also been a question about fall baseball, but our problem is, if we do that, we don't have the workforce in order to do that and other sports that we would put forward, so we kind of have to pick and choose. So be happy to answer any questions that the board may have about that or any other issue.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I did want to introduce Dr. Lutz, who is our acting superintendent for Kirtuk County High School.
Ready? Thank you. All right, anything further, sir? Yes. Okay, thank you. All right, next up, we have administrative reports. Item A, Maritime Museum Exhibit Presentation. Get a clicker. Not the clapper.
Good evening. Before we get started on the exhibits, I wanted to give just a brief update on the construction of the building. I just have a few pictures, maybe. All right. So we are about three to four weeks from drawing in the building. In the next several weeks, we're going to be putting on roof panels and getting the windows in, so this is just a, just a couple of pictures. I don't know how many of you get over there often, but I know. I'm excited, and a lot of the boat committee is here tonight, and we're all excited about getting this underway. We've been working on the exhibit design, and tonight, we wanted to present to you the final drawings. I've got Riggs Ward here, our exhibit designer, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mark to give his presentation.
Good evening. My name is Mark Tolliver, I'm with Riggs Ward Design, and I'm the exhibit designer for the Maritime Museum. I wanted to start with just a brief overview of the layout of the exhibits. Here I've got highlighted some of the interest points in the exhibits. The boats being the highlight of the exhibit, we have those running down the center of the building on either side of a ramp. We also have some boats displayed on the mezzanine. A lot of the interpretation in this core section of the building will be about the boats themselves. We have a orientation map as you first come into the building, we'll see some details on that later. So this is an interactive touchtable map that orients you to the space before you get into the content, and a lot of the exhibit content is focused on the north and south walls, where we explore the skills and occupations, both past and present, for the population, the local population. We have an elevated mezzanine level with some smaller boats on cribs. This one's a little bit more styled to the interior of a typical boat shed, we'll see some details on that later. And we've got a good distribution of audiovisual interactive components, so each one of those dots on the, each one of the colored dots, I should say, on that plan represents a interactive experience, a digital interactive experience for the guests. This is the first of several renderings I'm going to go through. This is a view from the entry of the building, this is as you've just walked in, the front doors, and you're greeted with this oval map table. This is as you've just walked in, the front doors, and you're greeted with this oval map table. This is a large format touchtable screen with a digital map and supporting graphics. We also have a large entry graphic to help introduce you to the Sound Skills, a working title, that we have for the theme of the exhibit. But this map table will, like I said, feature a digital map that multiple people will be able to explore. And it will also help orient you to the space relative to the sound, the coast, the lighthouse, and some other notable points of interest. Along the north and south walls, we have these opportunities to group some skill and occupation interpretation exhibits. And we wanted to call those out with what we're calling header graphics. These are the kind of sloped, dark blue graphics that you see on the, at the tops of the columns as you look down. So you get a nice vista over the table, down the ramp with the boats on either side. And you also get a clear idea of the different occupations and what you're about to experience from a guest standpoint, all just from this one view into the museum. We also have some interesting things on the back wall at the top of the ramp. This is an opportunity with this large blank wall to put some interesting props, things like a large fishing net or some boat templates. This view is, if you've walked just past this map table and you're looking back towards the entrance, we've got some priority placement for the Wellhead Club painting there in the entry. And this will help, gives you a sense of scale for this map table. It's ADA accessible on the backside, can handle up to four users at a time. And this gives you kind of a sense of spacing where we've got the table and the entry graphics situated. This is a view from the top of the ramp. So if you've walked up the length of the ramp and you're looking back towards the entry, this gives you a sense of how the boats will be laid out on either side. As you go further up the ramp, obviously, you'll be able to look down onto the boats. So it's a little bit unique perspective. You also see a good layout here of one of these skill and occupation bays, what we're calling bays, which is the area in between two columns on either the north or south wall. It's a lot of area where we can put some interpretive images. In this one, we're seeing an area that's devoted to guiding and for, for commercial and recreational means, as well as hunt club employees. So this is our interpretation of, of some of the interesting aspects of this kind of paired skill and occupation here. The idea behind this map would be a historical map with maybe some highlights of old hunt clubs. In this bay, you'll also see here a hands-on activity. We have the option to include a navigating Pilot House type activity. So you, the idea behind this is you'll be able to interact with a physical wheel and throttle to navigate a craft through a digital waterscape that's based on the sound. You'll have to, you know, work through challenges of tide and shoreline and identifying markers and things like that to get a real sense of, of what that might have been like. We also have an opportunity to include a lot of hands-on activities. So in the ramp, in the ramp layout, there's an actual, there's a spot where we're not placing a boat. We're actually going to place some hands-on activities and really get a good concentration of these. This would be representing a boat building activity, potentially some ribs made out of foam that could be put together to form a boat skeleton. We'll also want to include some knot tying activities and things that help you understand some of the skills that go into this occupation. Up on the mezzanine, you'll see that the appearance has changed quite a bit. We've got a dark cork paneling with some boarding in between. The idea here is to focus more on this aged boat shed feel, somewhere where some of these boats may have typically been, been housed in the past. We've got some hanging boat cribs for some smaller craft to be displayed. We also have opportunity to place some props on the walls around here to kind of give it that used, lived-in feel. Some of these areas, we can close off with some glazing and lit display cabinets so that artifacts of a sensitive nature can be locked up and protected. Here we have a layout of the north and south walls. These are, these are the focus areas of our skills and occupations interpretation. Again, kind of pairing things together between these bays. We've got between eight and 10 occupations that we would like to focus on, ranging from fishing and hunting to lighthouse and lifesavers, guiding and hunt clubs, boat building, obviously, and decoy making, as well as the law enforcement and frankly outlaw occupations paired together there, where we can start to explore relationships between these and get into some of those contemporary stories. Each one of these bays will have an AV unit that we're calling the interview screen. This is our AV number two, where you'll be able to explore different stories, recorded audio and video from the community to communicate, you know, some of these older stories from the people or their families that were involved with some of these skills and occupations as well. I wanted to talk a little bit about the boat cribs. We're obviously including some crib structures, cradle structures, rather, to support these larger boats. We've been working on some details. Each one of these will be templated by an exhibit fabricator per boat and custom-made. The idea is to use the cribs that are already supporting some of these boats. They're sturdy and they, they've held up well. They also tend to look the part for this boat shed display. What we would like to do is reinforce some of these with a steel understructure and caster so that they can be moved around, and then use that as a basis of design for the remaining boats that don't yet have cradles. We also have designs worked out for the smaller crib, hanging crib supports. These are also based on existing boat supports. And here, the last few slides, I wanted to go into just a kind of a typical layout for some of these AV interactives. This is the first of four AV interactives. This is what we're calling the Boat Explorer. On the ramp, there are two platforms. And at each of the two platforms, there are two interpretive digital screens where you'll be able to select a boat from the menu, a boat that's in the building, and then explore some deeper information, something that can't be conveyed in a graphic. You'll be able to kind of pan and zoom and maybe even look through with a cross-section different perspectives of these boats that you won't be able to see from the floor or from the ramp and kind of get into their story a little bit deeper. The second AV is Continuing Traditions, is the working title. These are our contemporary stories that I mentioned. There'll be a welcome screen or touch-to-bean screen with, with all of these AVs. So the idea is that you would walk up and scroll through a menu of different stories and, and videos that are relative to the occupation bay that you're in at the moment. So this would be an example of a fishing story there. And you select your story, and then you'll have an associated audio wand or headset to enjoy that content without sound bleed and sound spill throughout the exhibit. This is an example of the layout for the map table. The idea is that you would walk into the space and touch anywhere on the screen, and it would orient to you. If one user is touching the screen, it splits the screen lengthwise so that you've got one entire long side of the screen to manipulate and, and use as you explore the map. As additional users touch to, touch their zone or touch a different zone of the map, it will subdivide again until you have up to four users at a time, all independently searching and interacting with different portions of the map. This map will have other features apart from just hotspots where you can kind of touch to explore more. There will also be different sliders and timelines. We'll talk about that in a minute. The timeline for the, for the museum, we wanted to create a digital timeline here so we could really condense a lot of the history. And it's a more efficient use of, of the, of the space to have an AV component here. Also, it's a lot easier to add future content or discovered stories from the past if, if that should happen. So again, the idea would be you walk up and you kind of scroll through a timeline, and you could select different dates or features to, to enjoy more. And I wanted to give you some precedent images of the AV components in use. Really interesting one in this top left would be a slider where you could manipulate a panel, a digital panel, and slide it across the map. This could reveal, this could reveal different things over time, like if the shoreline has changed over time or how infrastructure and population might have changed over time. This one is actually comparing a historic map and a modern map and revealing the inaccuracies between the two and why that is. These other screens are typical of, you know, touch-to-bean interactive screens where you select from a menu to explore items deeper at your leisure. And I think with that, we have maybe time for a couple of questions, if that's all right.
Questions? All right. Looks great.
Yeah.
I like it.
We're excited about it. Thank you for the opportunity to show you guys what we've been doing.
Thank you. Don't normally invite anybody up, but I see we have lots of people here that have been involved in this project over the years. Do you guys want to comment on anything tonight or anything? You're welcome to come up this evening. I know you guys put a lot of 20 years of effort into it to get to this point. Please feel free.
I just want to, once again, thank you folks for supporting this project and pushing it over the top of the hill and getting us there. It rode over last week. It is progressing very well, and I think it's going to be something the whole county will be proud of when we get it done. Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Item B, Stormwater Drainage Analysis for 500 Year Storm Event. Who's going to be presenting this one?
While Kim Hamby gets ready, just if I can just kind of summarize how we got to this point real quick, since there were some kind of questions.
Of course.
At the winter retreat that we had at the, around the 1st of February, we were talking through stormwater issues, trying to figure out what potential solutions there were. We talked through a lot of the things that you heard from public comment, which was that, wow, I mean, a comprehensive study would make a lot of sense. And enacting those large-scale solutions might make sense when you're talking about them. The challenge for Currituck County is that we don't own the property. And you're talking about a lot, not for the study, but to implement any solutions would be a, a real cost to the taxpayers of this county. And so as we talked about that through the winter retreat, this is an idea that came up that said, well, maybe instead of the taxpayers bearing the brunt of that cost, maybe, you know, putting some of that cost back on the developers who are putting in these, these large developments makes sense. So it was brought up, let's see what that looks like in reality. One of the challenges that we've had with stormwater, and we've talked about it at length, is that the, the, the challenge that we, that we have is that we can't do upstream or downstream analysis. Or we don't require it for developments because they might not have permission to go on to these properties. And if they can't get permission, then they can't do the analysis. And so I think it was the direction of the board to get this, this study done. Initially, we were going to do it in-house. After the county engineering staff started looking at it, they said, you know, we'd really need some expertise to come in and take a look at this with what it is. And so that's how you've got the product that you're going to hear about from Ms. Hamby, who's with the Timmins Group. So with that all.
And if I could add one other aspect. Part of, part of the challenge that drove us down this path was we've been working with stormwater retention for 100-year storm events. And what that has failed to capture is successive rain events that appear to be happening significantly, I mean, definitely more frequent than they used to. And so you had a stormwater retention challenge that before the previous storm could be abated, we were getting successive storms on top of that. We've seen those stormwater retention, if I'm stealing your thunder, I'm really sorry. But what we've seen is in subdivisions that have had these systems in place, they've been overwhelmed by the amount of water that's hit them, causing flooding in the local, local communities. So in response to concern for folks that are already living in areas that see stormwater, that's why we were looking at alternative solutions to declaring eminent domain and, and, you know, things that are, in reality, untenable for this Board of Commissioners to do. So you're up.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. As you've heard, there's a lot of debate about how to properly address it. Fortunately for me, I wasn't tasked with how do we solve the problem. But what would the impact be of increasing that post-development limitation from the 10-year storm that is approximately six inches to the 12-inch storm, which is about a 500-year statistical storm? Certainly, as y'all have said, we have seen periods of one storm after another. Matthew really brought this to light to all of us. That was an excessive storm. That was a 500-year storm, which we really don't see that often. But it was on the tail of a 100-year storm the week before and another 100-year storm the week before. I will tell you honestly, I don't think we can solve the problems at that level because so much of our drainage does not handle that type of, of storm. We're flat land. The elevate, lack of elevation change makes that very difficult. And that's why we experience extended flooding for extended periods of time. I certainly understand the goal here is, let's see what we can do to increase storage in the new developments to keep them from contributing to a problem that exists and will continue to exist to some degree just because of our environment, the topography, the water table and everything like that. So what was provided to me were a group of subdivision designs that have recently been, and I say recently, over about the past five years, been reviewed and approved by Currituck County. I was provided with subdivision design plans and the drainage narratives and reports for those developments that were provided by the design engineers. Please understand that nothing I am saying in any way is intended to be critical of those designs or those drainage models. Different approaches were taken with every one of the subdivisions. Different engineering firms use different stormwater modeling programs. Pretty much everything done around this area is based on what we call the SCS curve number method. You've probably seen some of this if you've looked at the reports. It is a very standard method. It is what is more or less dictated by your manual be used. There are just a variety of ways of approaching that. After reviewing the data provided to me by Eric Weatherly, we chose two developments that we felt like provided enough information in the drainage reports that we could adequately reproduce those models to show you the difference between the 10-year storm control and the 12-inch storm control. The first one we chose to look at was Froggy Meadows Subdivision. This is located adjacent to the Puddin Ridge Road developments. Quail Run actually shares the Outfall Ditch from this subdivision. This development was modeled using a program that is an add-on to Civil 3D, which most engineering firms use to develop their design plans. The printouts were very straightforward, and we were able to almost identically reproduce. printouts were very straightforward, and we were able to almost identically reproduce what they did. Uh, we had a few little hiccups because, as you can see, there's ponds two and four are separate, but they work together because they are interconnected by a pipe that's down beneath the water level, and all of the control is placed in pond four. Um, the engineer that designed the subdivision, they did the combining of ponds two and four and the drainage areas two and four in the background and didn't publish all that data. They published the combined, um, results. So our, um, our, our actual results for the 10-year storm varied very slightly from theirs, but we felt like it was a good-calibrated model. Did our model to their 10-year storm results. Uh, we then did a trial and error by increasing storage volume in the ponds in our drainage models until we were able to get control that limited that 12-inch storm to the pre-development discharge for the two-year storm. In this case, you can see that we did have a slight increase from what they had determined for the 10-year, but we still stayed under the pre-development two-year discharge that they had calculated. Um, pond three's discharge rates, little over five CFS. Ponds two and four went up three CFS, but still, again, staying under the total of the two-year. This is very simplified. Uh, this analysis was done without regard for tailwater conditions, which means how inundated is that downstream ditch when the water starts to discharge from these ponds? And those tailwater conditions can impact and do impact how these ponds function. Um, there are currently no requirements in your drainage manual to study those type of tailwater. So that was not included here. Um, honestly, sometimes not including the tailwater is a more conservative approach because the ponds may not be able to discharge under tailwater conditions because the ditches are already full, and that in itself causes more backup in the subdivision. Do you want to ask me any questions about this one before I go on to the next one?
Ms. Hamby, if you could just, um, just so that I make sure I understand, the area in the blue is the current existing ponds, and everything in green is what it would take if you went with a 500-year storm?
Exactly. You can see the dash lines, and I've tried to make this so you can see the property lines underneath it, too. And it, it's not, we tried to make everything as large as we could, but yes, the blue dash lines that are internal to those ponds represent the limits of the pond sizes, uh, based on the 10-year design, and then the overall shaded areas represent how much those grew, uh, to accommodate the 12-year storm. And in this case...
Okay. I'm, you keep saying 10-year storm and 12-year storm.
And I mean 12-inch.
It's 10-inch and 12-inch, right?
Yes, and I, well, it's 6-inch.
Well, 6 and 12, okay.
That's the way we, that's the way we originally discussed it, was 10-year, which is 6-inch versus 12-inch.
Okay.
It just turns out that the 12-inch is approximately the 500-year storm. So, I apologize.
So, and I know the concept by labeling these storms was once every 500 years, once every 100 years?
Uh, that's, that tends to be interpretation, but that is not actually what it means. It is based on a ratio of a 500-year storm means you have a 1 in 500 chance of having that storm this year. So, there is a bit of a misconception in the way that term...
Got it. So, in our 1 in a, do you have, our 1 in 100-year storm, whatever, where we were having several of them a year, is, do you have an, I mean, do you have an idea, like, how many last year of those we had?
I can't.
Okay. More than one?
Definitely more than one. But the result is these ponds increased about two and a half times on average in, in overall size. Um, it varies from pond to pond, uh, but...
That, you're talking about, it looks minuscule relatively up there.
Um, the old, the pond one did not have to increase much. Now, pond one is an infiltration basin that's not designed to discharge anything. So, the area of that basin is increased based on a footprint and an infiltration rate to prevent discharge. Um, pond four has about doubled. Pond two is a little more than double, a, and pond three is about two and a half times the size.
Blue line is, that's the 100?
That's the current.
That's the current design, yes.
Got it. Okay.
It's not the scale.
It, it's the scale.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, I mean, not to scale up there, but they are all relative scale, yes.
In this particular setting, they lost one, two, three, probably four or five lots, I guess, of maybe...
They've lost about two or three lots out of only an 18-lot subdivision.
One to 22.
Now, there are, there are other factors, too. If there's open space required and how much of that open space gets eaten up, there, there are a lot of different factors. But what I found with this subdivision and the next is, in general, we can expect a 15% loss in lot yield and about a two and a half times increase in pond surface areas.
So, eh, excuse me, acreage-wise, what would be the biggest pond?
In this subdivision?
Aren't those lots like 40,000?
Those are 30,000 square foot lots.
So, you're looking at 60,000?
So, you're looking at acre and a half, probably.
Concrete went from a surface area of just under 18,000 square feet to almost 50,000 square feet.
So, you've gone over an acre.
How big is pond four?
Well, I don't have ponds two and four broken down because, uh, we use the numbers, but just like them, we didn't put every number in the report. Uh, but the two combined went from just under 50,000 square feet to over 124,000 square feet.
That's three acres.
Now, this study is assuming that the sand stayed at the same water?
It doesn't take that into account.
It's just the water on site.
It's just, it's just holding water and discharging it at a set rate. It just holds more water, basically.
Because the discharge rate doesn't remain the same.
At some point, there will be. But those things are not taken into consideration in these studies.
Six, five, six, yeah.
Okay. The next subdivision we looked at was Countryside Estate subdivision, um, that is, is very northern part of the county. Now, this is immediately south of North Point subdivision. Uh, this one was a little more complex in that there is a, the North Point subdivision drains through this development, um, to an outfall ditch on the south side of the development. That creates a unique situation for designers, uh, because we have to, we can't control that water. If we try to control that water, then we're impacting another development. We have to continue to let that free flow. Um, we had a lot more problem calibrating this model, um, than we did the other. I think that's partially due to the program that was utilized to do this model by the original designer. It, it was an older program that I did not have access to, so we, we tried to do the best we could with our PC swim model. Uh, we actually got much higher discharge rates, um, than they did in their model. And I tried to calibrate it, but the level of change that I had to put into the model to get my discharges down to the level that they had, uh, compromised the model. I had to, I mentioned curve numbers before. Um, curve numbers are a value assigned to a piece of land dependent upon how much of it is covered with impervious surfaces and what the soil types are, and type of grass cover and all. Uh, this is not a direct correlation, but it's something that I tell some of my clients to help them understand the curve numbers. Um, the highest curve number we use is 98, and these are all, uh, dictated by years and years of research and, and literature. Uh, 98 is what we use for roofs and asphalt and concrete. And you can kind of think about it like 98% of the water that hits that surface is going to run off. So, the less cover you have, the more permeable soils you have, the less runoff you get. Um, to get the results that they got in this model, I was decreasing curve numbers for drainage areas by a factor of 10 or 15. I was having to increase friction in pipes drastically, and I felt like if I continued down that route, there was no way I would get reasonable results to provide to you.
Plain speak, right, and I know you weren't part of their calculations, is, you're saying their numbers were far more optimistic than you were able to generate without jumping through excessive hoops to basically, in other words, the modifications that you were having to add to your results got to the point of being valueless, right, because you were basically throwing things at it that you couldn't justify as an engineer to try to get to the numbers that they had. So, they had far better numbers than you could dream of getting with your results.
Correct. But they used the proper values. It was just the program that they used generated, um, substantially different results. So, my approach then changed with this project. And I said, okay, I can't duplicate their numbers. But a logical assumption is, if I had reproduced their pre-development model, that likewise, my pre-development numbers would have been much higher than theirs as well. So, since they were required, their 10-year storm was limited to the two-year pre. To give you a realistic look at the impact to those ponds, we got our 10-year to where we felt comfortable with it. Then we turned around and ran the 12-inch 500-year, and we started making modifications to the ponds and the discharge piping to try to hold back that 12-inch storm to the same levels we got with a 10-year 6-inch storm.
Well, when you did this analysis, and this one's already done, but in the future, you, did you take into account the size of the culvert under 168 there?
No, because my termination point was the same, because I was having to base my study on what they did. Their termination point of the study for the subdivision was the twin culverts that I have pointed to. It's labeled as outfall H2. Um, that was their study point. Now, they did do a, an off-site downstream analysis, and I know they did some clean, prescribed some cleanout. Um, but that was not part of the analysis for the discharge from the subdivision.
And that was prescribed, not performed. When you say they prescribed some cleanouts downstream, were those cleanout, was that done?
That was done, and, uh, I have verified that. You, and the only reason I know that for a fact is because I've seen it on the aerials. You can see it in Google Earth.
Do we know who did it?
I don't know.
I don't know.
The reason I ask my question, and this is a problem in the Moyoc area, is the culverts under 168 are undersized now.
I'm sure.
You know, we're going to have to look at those culverts, if that is the state route for the water to get to the creek.
And now you're getting to the point that the engineers that stood up and spoke in your public comments were trying to make.
The, the challenge there is that even if we knew those culverts are undersized, we have no authority to do anything about that. I mean, and, and to Commissioner Beaumont's point, if they weren't under a state road and they were on private property, the only way we would have any guarantee that we could fix it is if either get access from the property owner, or if they deny access, is to use eminent domain. And I do not believe that's a tool that the Board of Commissioners for Currituck County wants to use, so...
Now, tailwater was taken into consideration when this model was done. The engineers had done a quick tailwater, um, calculation based on the discharge rates they were seeing, and they did look at how that water would back up from those culverts. But it was only taking into consideration that immediate drainage area, when there are other drainage areas draining to those culverts, and then there are impacts on the downstream of those culverts. Now...
One of the things you touched on, where is there?
It's hot.
Don't, don't be so loud. Okay, yes, please. So, she addressed drainage from the other subdivision going through this project that I, I believe, you can't impede, but how often does that happen?
North Point is just north of this, and North Point, excuse me, had these ditches running through this tract of land that came down through this tract of land and then across under 168. So, this developer didn't want to reproduce that ditch, and he agreed to a pipe. So, this pipe was sized to handle North Point, and this developer has also agreed to maintain that pipe. So, it was a, a very unique situation. They didn't want to ditch it. They put in a pipe. Napolitano or that HOA maintains that pipe. And then that ditch that you see to the south, they cleaned out that ditch all the way to 168, but they stopped at that point. So, there was no true downstream analysis. I think they cleaned out that ditch because of...
I think they dug a new one, didn't they?
Another development might be coming along. When this will stop...
To, to answer, to answer your question a little more directly, is, can Currituck County sees more residential development? You're going to see this happen more and more frequently as subdivisions stack up next to subdivisions. They are going to have to model the flow coming from the other subdivision.
Well, we've got it with the false...
Right.
It's just a separate model for that one pipe going through that subdivision. And that's why Kim didn't have to model it, because it didn't really affect the subdivision or those ponds.
Got it, because it goes straight through.
It just goes straight through.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. You, you're back.
He was hiding.
We're dismissed.
So, that pipe's drainage was modeled separately to make sure that it was, the sizing was sufficient to handle the flow of a 10-year storm from North Point subdivision through this. Um, in the ultimate model for the subdivision, they did recombine them, which helps provide for tailwater impact to our discharging ponds. But we can't look at that total discharge point because it, it does have that flow, flow through the subdivision. So, we have to look at where the individual ponds discharge. Now, in this development, we did not only increase pond size, we also had to decrease the size of pipes discharging from those ponds and cause the water to stack up higher in the subdivision to be able to reach, to limit that 12-inch discharge rate. Um, just increasing pond sizes was reaching the point of wiping out the entire development. So, we had to start looking at decreasing the pipes from one pond to another, uh, to cause a hydraulic backup of the water in those ponds. And they were, they were reduced, um, substantially. From pond, ponds three and four are the only control ponds. Ponds one and two are interconnected to pond three. So, the control really exists where pond three outfalls. So the control really exists where pond three outfalls. All of the discharge pipes in the subdivision were thirty-six inch. We had to limit the pipe coming out of pond three to an eighteen-inch pipe to cause the backup, to keep it from discharging faster. Pond four was reduced to a fifteen-inch to keep it from discharging anymore. And...
Point being, unless you did pipe restrictions, all that water was going to leave the site about as fast as it came in, overwhelming the drainage system downstream.
Assuming the drainage stream downstream.
I, got it. All I care about is at the property line. So we're releasing into an existing ditch line. So the problems we have when we see storm after storm after storm, and we can't get our ditches clear, unless you restrict the pipe size, we're going to see the flooding that we're already seeing. So, and, so to prevent overwhelming the community's systems, you have to restrict pipe size to slow it down.
Yes.
Got it.
Now, I saw something interesting in this too. Because we did have a tailwater condition, and because we do have a large quantity of water coming through the development that along with our development has to get under, through those twin pipes that were at the end of the study. In this case, the water from North Point subdivision backed up in the ditch adjacent to pond three to a level that caused that water to run into pond three, not pond three to discharge into that ditch. So, and that's...
Twelve-inch design?
Yes. We, there is a, a weir. Basically, the whole side of pond three, parallel to that ditch, has an armored lowered bank ditch. It's done for a reason. We're supposed to have emergency spillways for detention ponds because you don't want them building up to a point where they cause a breach. So they had lowered the bank between the ditch and pond three by about a foot and armored it with riprap so that if pond three ever did get to the point of needing to overflow and could, we knew we had to increase our pond size so that we weren't discharging over that weir, but the other water backed up and came into our pond. And I think that's, and I have seen this in more detailed models with more downstream and upstream drainage analysis, that at some point, the subdivision has controlled itself, but the inundation of the area as a whole makes it virtually impossible to... The water's going to level out, and it's going to find the path of least resistance. Again, we had major increases. Eric plus that because I use percentages, so. But anywhere from two-point-two times to almost three times the pond size. And stacking water back into the subdivision at a substantially higher level.
Lots of lots on this one is about fifteen percent?
It'll also lots on this one again is about fifteen percent. So, in summary, as we've discussed, pond sizes based on the numbers increase anywhere between hundred and twenty percent, hundred and eighty-one percent, or two-point-two to two-point-eight times the size they are currently saying. Lot yields will drop by about fifteen percent or more, depending on the type of subdivision. It, I did feel good about some of this in the fact that the subdivisions, one has twenty thousand square foot lots, one had thirty. The results were very similar with both subdivisions. So I think it's pretty consistent as to what you would see, depend, no matter what engineer did the design or what model they used, based on these types of conditions. But there are so many things that impact this. Soil types, sandier soils, water tables.
We don't have to worry about sandy soils.
Not in Moayac.
We have very little of it, I know.
Two, ten feet down.
Water tables around here are high. The higher the water table is, the less vertical storage you have in a pond. Therefore, you need more lateral space. Condition of drainage outlets does need to be taken into consideration. And the less adequate the outlet, the larger the ponds are going to be. Again, lot sizes and type of subdivision, whether it's conservation with smaller lots or larger lots, that's going to impact that some. And then the overall site coverage, which to some degree comes along with the lot sizes. Smaller lots are usually going to be more dense with much higher overall percentage of coverage versus, you know, acre lots that are generally limited to low density. That, that really sums up my report.
So, again, from where we are today to where this would take us, the concern has been overwhelming the, the water storage capability of the subdivisions that have been going in. And it's been fairly consistent that it seems like every year they're over, they're over-inundated. This doesn't necessarily mean that it's the guarantee for all solutions and all times. There's going to be times that this too would be over, overwhelmed. But this provides a very good buffer between where we are today and trying to retain more of that stormwater on site before overwhelming the local systems. Eric, did you have any comments?
I, talk about release rate. And our, our release rate is about seven days it takes to get the pond to... Could you speak for that?
Well, and of course, release rate is, is based on some of these same conditions now.
So it's going to take three, two and a half ponds as long to drain back down?
Exactly. So while you're holding back the peak, you're going to have those downstream ditches inundated for a longer period of time as all of this water slowly releases.
Okay, well, why is that? When you say inundated, when you say inundated, the impression is maxed?
Well, the, the more water we store, the longer it's going to take for it ultimately to drain out.
Right. Because we don't want the water in your front yard. We'd like to keep it in the ditch and leaving in a controlled manner rather than in your garage and, you know, stuff like that.
Flow downstream will be sustained for a longer period of time. At a lesser peak rate, but for an extended period of time.
I think we understand that's, that's what you get when you try to control, you know, level out the outflow rather than being inundated all at one time. Because the other solution is if you had no water retention, then the ditches will be empty as fast as they possibly could. Just everybody floods.
So we've had the report done, which was the direction from the retreat. So really, the question is, does the board want staff to craft an amendment to change to this? Or are you guys comfortable with the report and just let it sit for a little bit?
I think with all the problems that we've had with people coming before us, that their yards have never flooded before, they're flooding now. I think we need to protect people who already have homes here in Currituck, not just the people who are building new homes.
Darren, why is the problem? As we saw, you know, the new neighborhood protected itself, but it, but it had sheet flow onto it from adjoining property. And now that water's gone to someone else's property. And, and so the neighborhood period is causing a problem, but it's an unintended consequence of them retaining their own water. So that's, that's, that's another issue to tackle in addition to what we're talking about here.
Well, if they start retaining more water, there's going to be less problems in the future. You can't go back and undo what's already done.
Right. The, the challenge with that other neighborhood is not the neighborhood itself.
Right.
The water generated on the neighborhood itself. That water is coming from upstream.
Right.
And that goes back to Eric's, you know, we need to look at upstream, downstream, try to fix that aspect, which experience has shown us that's a very difficult fix to get in place. All this does is provide less, from my point of view, less impact from successive storm events, which were not, the system we're using right now is not capturing, the modeling is not capturing what happens when we get rain on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Sunday. It, it's just not. And we're seeing overflowing ditches for far longer than we ever used to see them before. And, you know, I don't know if we're in a rain cycle or whatever, but, but that's, that was the intent, or that's what the desire here was. You know, it impacts the number of lots. You know, maybe there's some language that we can look at from an open space, although that, that's part of the, you know, the whole packages it is. But I think it is a consistent, every subdivision that comes before this board, the number one complaint we hear about, well, actually, I guess there's two. I think this is still number one, is you're going to flood me. That is, that is the number one complaint. Number two is then I'll never be able to get out of the, get on the highway.
Another...
I'm, no, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, another concern we got to have is with the slower release of water, what's the negative impacts of that slower release?
Well, the water's going to release. I mean, it, it, one way or the other, all this does is meter it out rather than all at one time. I mean, that's, with, with impervious soil, that's what you get. You know, the more impervious you have, there is no restriction, the water is there.
So how much do we impact the soil conditions?
Oh, huge.
Make sure I get the point I was getting at is when Eric Kirk and Beaumont, the, the south side of the Point Jack Canal, that's a little...
Sandier.
It's a sandier, so we wouldn't have these conditions. I mean, would we want to implement something like this on the county? Or would it be based on certain demographics? Because the south of the county doesn't have the same problems as the northern county with the clay soil.
But their design of their BPs, their, their storm retention ponds would take into account the soil types. So the, so the ponds are going to get smaller down south because they're going to, the water's going to purge.
But you have to wonder if the southern part of the county saw the growth rate that Moayac is seeing.
Would that be a difference?
Is the soils really the limiting factor?
Well, this, I mean, like you said, the soils in the south, and it's, it's night day. Try digging.
Especially areas of south of the county, my neighborhood won't, that flood. Because I'm having water for my house.
Yes.
Well, like you said, the other thing too, I mean...
And you stack up three or four hundred lot subdivision on your road beside you.
Okay, so... It's, it's always, I think, Eric, you always maintain it's an outfall problem. Where, where we get to the, right, bigger, bigger issue, one of the bigger issues is getting...
So we do hold a ten-year storm, and we have multiple back-to-back storms. And that storm, that, that pond will overflow and overwhelm more greatly. So now you hold a five-hundred-year storm, it'll hold more. But remember, the release rate is a two-year storm. And that two-year storm was picked on, picked by what our average ditch sizes of there can carry. So now, instead of flowing at that two-year storm for seven days, which is the max capacity of those ditches, now you're faced with twenty-one days or three weeks at max capacity. And then you dump another storm on top of when that pond ever does get full. Now you, you're right back to square one.
Well, square one in that the ditches remain full of water, right?
Overflowing that five-year, hundred-year storm through that overflow weir.
It, but I mean, it would take a larger rain event to overwhelm the...
Listen, we get a Matthew, a nor'easter followed by a Matthew. I don't care what system we design, it's going to be overwhelmed. I don't care.
I do preach the downstream analysis. I do, and I was kind of responding to that comment.
Got it.
But you're right, it, it takes more to overwhelm.
And, and I get it, the more water we stockpile and we're releasing it in a slower manner, those ditches are going to remain full longer. They may, all rainy season, they may never empty out. But that, but again, the, the original concern that we brought this, this analysis forward was because neighborhoods getting flooded out because of successive storms and the inability to keep the stormwater on site.
This will help. Is it the overall answer that's the hard point?
No.
This, this subdivision that she was showing before, countryside of states. I've done some work at North Point with my business. Those yards, it, it did help on those that, that I've personally seen where we, something may be wet longer. It, you know, like I said, that, that it helped in that, I mean, after the test of that.
So to answer your question, Ben, it seems to me that we're going to have to probably have a little work session, talk about where we're going from here, now that we have, now that we have some information in front of us.
I think it's, yeah, that's, that's...
So what other information would the board like to have?
Is there any mechanism to fund these downstream analyses or do this work beyond what we already know, eminent domain, or getting permission?
To fund it or to actually accomplish it?
Accomplish it.
I can answer that question right now, and that question, the answer to that is no. You have to get access to the property.
Just, just look at the Army Corps' analysis, and that alone, I, I mean, as was brought up during public comment, I mean, we did a regional analysis, and the cost to fix that was, how many million?
Four million.
A lot. And, and I, it would be interesting to hear, right? But from a developer perspective, you know, which would you all prefer? You know, losing fifteen percent of your lots or trying to figure out how to get outfall, outfall? Because, I mean, and, and option would be great, but the reality is there's always going to be a constraint. Somewhere downstream here, there will be a constraint.
That's, that's the only other option that I can see, but it wouldn't be the county doing it. It would be requiring the developer to do a study and make any changes that were found. But I mean, once again, you could be talking millions of dollars of improvements to infrastructure. And you get access to the issue.
There's a lot of, lot, been a lot of discussion about a watershed, complete watershed district for the county. And I would think we would have to look at possible legislation that would help accomplish. Because if you just get it off of the property, if you don't go downstream, like Eric says, you're not doing anything. And these ditches, with this slower release rate, it's just going to become breeding areas for the state birds and mosquito.
But, but yeah, I mean, so I mean, like I said, staff is happy to come back with whatever follow-up information you all need. But I don't know, I don't know that we're going to be able to provide anything that's going to go any more in-depth than what you've just heard.
Can we do a work session on it?
We don't, I, I don't know that we need a work session, but...
Well, I, I think, you know, we're getting ready to, if we, if we implement, if we change the language and do a five-hundred-year storm requirement or twelve-inch rain requirement, I do think we need to hear a little bit from the developer community before we do that, because it is going to have a significant impact on them, and they need to be ready to handle that. What does that mean? So I do believe we need to, to have, have some discussion with them before we go drop this in their laps.
So then instead of a work session, what I'm hearing is maybe a forum with those folks?
I think so, something that'll...
Not really, it's not really information that staff brings forward, but getting you and those folks in a room together and having a conversation about?
And, and the brutal, there's going to be decisions, right? One of them is, we won't, I mean, depending on the evidence, et cetera, et cetera. But you may not get as many subdivisions approved, or you may have to suck it up and build, you know, these features into your subdivision. Because I, I, every subdivision that comes up, we hear about the flooding.
Yeah.
Every single one. And if we don't figure it out, right, our, our residents don't, you know, it's not fair to them. And...
We'll try to set that up sometime in July then, get you guys and those folks in our room together to talk about the impacts. Because, I mean, we know what the impacts will be. I mean, that's what this study tells us. The question is, what does that impact mean to the economics of residential development?
There's going to be a, a significant number for them financially.
I know, but should you have the developers, but you should have the citizens?
Yep.
The people who've been impacted by it.
Well, maybe that's, that's face too. We have, we have this discussion, if we implement something, we have...
Screening in between each group.
We have, we have the DOT system, we can get together for them to come in and talk about that.
I've just been reminded, one other community is the farmers that are downstream.
Right.
On these ditches.
Keeping their ditches clean.
What's the impact on them?
So are we wanting to have three... So are we wanting to have three separate meetings, one big meeting?
Yeah, one big meeting.
Okay, we'll be back in this room.
All right. And I, I would ask.
Lori, you'll have her dots.
The developers and the agriculture community are very easy to identify. I'd look to the board, if you've heard complaints from specific folks, let us know those.
Just Mo Yaki.
Just Mo Yaki.
Put it on Facebook.
Well, I, I think when we do it, we need to take a hypothetical, say, 300-acre farm or something, and just show what it would mean.
Well, I mean, that's what we did with those two subdivisions.
Yeah, but they're already existing, and they're going to say, well, that doesn't impact the future, really.
Well, we, we'd have to, but to do that is going to be a little costly, because she's, she would have to design an entire stormwater plan. That's why we use the, I mean.
Got it.
That, that, that basically is just, yeah. So.
Well, let's start with sitting down.
We got Eric.
He's got all the time in the world. All right.
Five. Thank you. Thank you. Yep, I've got direction, we'll set up a meeting and go from there.
All right, with that, I think I'll recess for five, five, 10 minutes here, stretch the legs, and we'll come back and get a follow-up here. All right. Moving on to public hearings, item A, public hearing and possible action on the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. Required public hearing for possible adaptation following presentation of proposed budget added to June 1, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting. With that, I will turn it over to the county manager.
Mr. Chairman, not really a whole lot of follow-up for me, it's really up to, to see what the public has to say during the public hearing, and then if the Board of Commissioners have any questions on, there's a couple items that we want to talk about, but probably appropriate to let the public hearing take place first.
Okay. Well, I don't have anyone signed up this evening, I'll open the public comment portion of the public hearing, and I did not have anyone signed up. Does anyone here want to speak to our budget this evening? All right, seeing no one, I will close that, and look to the board for any discussion at this point in time.
Mr. Chairman, in looking through the budget, specifically on the school systems budget, there's several items, some in an operational category, and then several in the capital funds, that, seeing how they will be appearing before us next Monday, that I'd like to suggest that we hold off voting on the budget till at least next Monday, following answers to some questions that I have.
Okay. Were there any items in the budget we wanted to discuss tonight at all, or just wait, save it all till, till then?
Other than the items?
Well, the.
You mean specifically on the school budget items?
Uh, no, like, uh, we were talking about pay increases, all that kind of stuff, we just want to hold off on all of it until.
Can we, can we let the county manager go through his stuff and then hold off?
I don't think he went through the budget.
I mean, the, the only thing that I have is the email that I sent to the board, which was requested to quantify the salary study increases and cost of living, that I sent out in an email over the weekend. I will look to our finance director before you all officially vote on that motion, and just see if, what kind of issues holding the budget for another week might cause her staff.
The only thing that we can execute contracts that are for July first, which is healthy.
So.
So we have time, I guess, for some.
One more week.
Action for next Monday, it gives you time?
Next Monday, we just won't be able to.
We won't be able to sign contracts for the 4th of July.
Is that?
It doesn't make or break anything, it just.
Okay.
I'm on second, Commissioner Beaumont's motion.
Thank you. Leanne, are you clear on, you just, you're just moving, making this, moving to this?
Correct.
Okay, nothing on that, okay. All right, any other discussion?
Yes. I want to get clarification with the motion, was it, you know, we're going to, not going to have any discussion right now? What was, what was your motion again?
My motion was that, depending on whether other discussions need to occur, that we hold off voting on the, the budget until next Monday.
So going forward with Ben's discussions?
I would like to go ahead and hear that.
That's all I want to clarify, I want to clarify that, okay.
Okay.
Just before voting?
Yeah, that's all I want clarification.
Or we'll still have the discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Oh, okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? All right, we will hear this, that's our next meeting on the 20th.
So now I'm a little confused. I know we're going to hear it then, and make a decision. Were we going to have discussion tonight about anything, or not?
That's what I thought you were going to do.
That's what I thought we were going to do.
If you can discuss your, if you want, I can take action.
Got you.
Till the school board comes in.
So the only discussion point that I have is the, is on the breakdown of the, the salary study increases, the cost of living increases, and the timing that those could potentially occur. So I'm going to unpack a lot of numbers here real quick. We ran the total cost of the salary study, there was a little bit of explanation that needs to be given to this number. When we moved firefighter basics and firefighter intermediates or advanced up, we had a issue where then firefighter paramedics would be on the same salary grade as a firefighter basic. And so there's compression, which happens, but this is to a whole nother level where, you know, you've got employees who have a paramedic certification, who if they wanted to, could say, well, I'd rather be working as an advanced, because I would make more money, and not use my paramedic certification, if they wanted to. And so it, it really got into some challenges. So we had to move paramedics up to at least the same level as an advanced, and the lieutenants up at least one level above a paramedic. And what that did, the total cost for increases to the fire service was $581,461, and that was retirement, FICA, insurance didn't change based on salary. So the total cost of the salary study implementation.
I'm sorry, and, and over what period of time is that? That the annual, annual cost?
That's the annual. So the, the total cost of the salary study is $811,192. The cost of the COLA, the 2% COLA, or cost of living increase, would be $564,943. So that would bring the total to $1,392,358. Now, there's a nuance to this. If you do the salary study, and then you wait to do the COLA, you spend more money. If you do the COLA and the salary study at the same time, the COLA helps make up part of the difference of the salary study. And so if you did both items at the same time, you actually saved $68,580 annually. Looked at, instead of moving the, the fire staff all the way to what was recommended, making a move to where basically, basics and advanced stayed just below paramedics, and that would reduce the total cost of the salary study to $535,589, but that's just a one-year savings, because you'd have to the next year, once you did the paramedic lieutenant study, you'd have to increase the basic and advanced again. So that's not like a continual savings.
Right, but remember, we're just trying to get through the COVID year. So we were trying to get through the impact to our budget based on COVID.
So.
But just to, just to clarify, you said 535?
535, 589 is the total salary study.
Okay, and that is comparative to the 811?
811, 198.
Okay, so basically, almost 300 grand cheaper.
This year. This year, because you'd have to increase it next year.
Yeah, next year will be a little bit, yeah.
Yeah. So it takes the, the fire portion from 508, $581,461 to $361,206. So one other point of clarification, there were some numbers at the last meeting, where it was discussed what the savings would be, if we didn't have to work employees in overtime positions to cover shifts. When we put those numbers together, we figured covering the full shift at time and a half, and that's not accurate, because you would have had to pay somebody regular time anyway. So you really only needed to count the extra overtime that you would have been paying. So instead of the $22,000 a month savings, it's actually only $8,545 a month. So it's not as, as great of a savings. Now, the burnout's still an issue that we, that was discussed, but we don't have quite the cost savings that was, that was projected.
Were we, were we able to capture the cost lost in training personnel?
Not in the, not in the timeframe, I mean, that, that's a study that would need.
Got it, okay. And then, did, what was the other que, okay, so what was your overtime calculate, what were your overtime calculations based on?
For the savings?
Uh, no, on your, on the 535 slash the 811 number.
That, that's base salary, so that's, that's.
Their normal overtime.
Yeah.
Their normal whatever.
Yeah.
Ben, you said that y'all are going to hire four employees. What's the timetable on that?
Oh, I don't know, off the top of my head, I've approved them, so I mean, it should be within the next, I mean, two to four weeks, they should be onboarded, I think. So, so one of the discussions that we had, so let me, let me back up and kind of just reframe the discussion, where my recommendation was, and talk about one other option that you all have available before you. I greatly believe that the, the fire employees need an increase. I think that that's proven by this unbiased salary study that we had done. I think that's obvious. The reason that came about is, the way that it was calculated, is that we used the annual salary of a basic EMT, or in our EMS division, and we put that same annual salary on a fire employee. A normal employee can work 2,080 hours before they go into overtime. A fire employee can work 2,756 hours before they enter overtime. And because we use the same annual salary rate, it gives a lower hourly wage to the fire employee. They actually make less an hour. In the course of a year, they might make more, because on top of the 2,756 hours, I can't remember the number off the top of my head, there's around 200 extra hours of overtime that were. So, so there is the potential for a fire employee to make above what an EMS, EMS employee makes.
But they just don't.
And they will, but not on an hour-by-hour basis. And so there's two types of employees in an organization, there's exempt and non-exempt. Exempt employees are typically employees who are in leadership positions, and there's a whole set of criteria that I, I won't point you guys with tonight, but those are the ones that work for truly a salary. So they work for, you know, X amount of money per year. Non-exempt employees get paid by the hour. And so your fire employees are hourly employees. So I've expressed to, to the board over the last two months now, that my recommendation is to take a very conservative approach to the budget this year, just because of the unknowns that are before us. We talked about looking at it in December, and seeing how we were at that point, and move forward from there. We are seeing higher occupancies than we saw last year at the beach. That's based on data that we get from the rental management companies. Our sales tax that we collect, a good portion of it does come from the rentals that are paid on vacation home. Because of that, we can use our occupancy tax to give a little bit of a look into some of the sales tax that we're going to see. We would get the occupancy tax numbers for the summer in September of this year, and so we could make an educated guess or prediction on what at least part of the sales tax is going to be, by looking at what occupancy tax made up of our sales tax revenue in prior years, use that same percentage, and then kind of figure out, are we going to be as short as we think or not? So if you all have a desire to do something before December, the earliest I would recommend is to have a discussion in September and make it effective in October. Now here's where I'm going to, going to kind of argue against myself a little bit. I strongly encourage the Board of Commissioners that if you decide to move forward, and I understand that we've got large turnover in the fire services, but if you decide to move forward with a salary study increase, then do the, definitely do the full salary study, don't just do the fire portion. Because there are other people who are underpaid, given not at the same rate that the fire employees are, but I think that, you know, that there's equitability there. And secondly, I would encourage you, if we can wait till September, if we can afford it, to do the COLA with the salary study. Because if we continue to go down this path of a set group of employees gets a raise here, and then a set group gets here, it starts to become difficult for me as your manager to maintain morale throughout the county. And so that's, that's basically my recommendation, is that the earliest I would recommend doing anything would be effective in October, after we have a chance to look at the numbers in September. And I'd recommend not doing a part of the salary study, do the whole thing, and if the numbers are there, to do the COLA. And I'll be happy to answer, I think that was kind of the only thing that we still had questions about from the budget, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
The one.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I'm going on service three years on this board, and I think one of the things that I've heard this board say over and over and over again, is how the Board of Education goes into their fund balance. If we do this now, we will have to go into our fund balance. This is a reoccurring thing. You don't give somebody a raise and then take it away. We're not sure, they say North Carolina, the virus is, I think we're like one of the fifth or sixth states now with how we're having more viruses, the COVID-19. I think as a former, also county employee, I can see where people are coming from. Everybody wants more money. But how can we, as a board, do something that we criticize another board for doing? If we're going to go into our fund balance to pay for this rate, to me, that's not being physically conservative, it's not looking out for the taxpayers. And also, I think it would cause a really, really bad morale problem in the county. We picked and choose before, and we can't pick and choose now. So I personally think we need to wait till we see what's going to happen. We could have the bridge closed down in two weeks, we don't know. We could have a storm. But for us to go into our fund balance after we've been critical of another Board of Education, I just, I don't see it.
There, I mean, there's a lot of what-ifs, I mean, the power could go out here in 10 minutes, because it's storming outside. The county, I, I mean, the dollars and the money that's going to that beach, and I worked the roads, and anybody that is in this room that sees the traffic, it is absurd to say, I know the sales tax is going to be down, the oc tax is going to be huge, I've said it before, and I'll say it again in here, and I know you probably by law can't do it. There's 438 county employees that work for this county, excuse my language, they work their ass off for this county, and it offends me that we're not going to pay those. You can give everybody the 2%, you don't have to give this guy, because I don't really care, but I'm tired of the morale for the dollars and cents. The people work, you get an honest day's work from the county employees, and the money's going to be there. The beach is packed, the traffic, it's packed, the stores on the mainland, it's packed. We collect taxes good, I mean, the sales tax is going to be off a little bit, but I don't think it's not being conservative, the money's going to be there. I mean, it's going to be there, this guy, I'm, I'm not voting for December to wait, I'm not voting for September, it needs to be now. We didn't do it last year, and it's, it's ridiculous, so, but that's just my two cents.
I, I think there is a significant difference between what we're discussing here and between the way another elected board plans on, on day one of adopting the budget, year after year after year, and going into their fund balance, not even knowing or able to defend why they need to go into the fund balance. I would suggest, anyone on this board ever get an answer explaining why we went through almost $5 million in eight years? I don't think our former superintendent could give us an answer, I don't care how many times we asked. We have a very specific need, we are losing, and, and I get it, firefighters are the ones that have brought it to the table, because they are, we are losing them left and right. Your, the fund, the, the finance study that you did, right, one of the differences between what was presented at the last. One of the differences between what was presented at the last Commissioners' meeting and this one is, that was based on minimum staffing. That was not based on the staffing that is, that we planned on, and that was four per station, right? That is not what we were planning on. Your budget, I'm assuming, is for a fully-staffed fire department. Okay? So, I, somebody tell me, when was the last time we had full staffing? I mean, maybe, I don't think we ever did.
And you're not gonna get it neither. I mean, and like you said, to get, they have to work seven, almost 700 more hours, so you don't see your family for an additional 30 days that year, but you can make more than the guy that's an EMT, and you're doing more. It's just, it's absurd, so I mean, it's just, like I said, I'm just gonna be quiet, 'cause it's just.
I understand going into and spending money that we quote-unquote haven't collected yet, but like Kevin, and I'm sure Bob would say the same thing, it is, it is crazy busy in the Outer Banks, in Corolla. It is crazy busy.
It is, it is, Kevin, Kevin's right, there's a lot of people there. I would caution the board, though, to not count that money. Don't count that chicken yet. I've talked to several, several of my friends that are restaurant owners to get an idea of what it's done to them. They drive a lot of sales tax revenue. One of them did $55,000 last year for the same date range, this year, $30,000. And that, and talking to several other ones, they're in the same boat. It is a huge number that's gonna affect our sales tax. I went around, I had some friends in town, they went over to go shopping, you know, hit the 10 buck too, and all that stuff, and a lot of businesses have, you gotta have a mask to come in. Then they try to sell you a mask for a dollar if you didn't have one, if you came to their store. So what'd they do? They walked out of that store, and then didn't shop there. So there's other layers that are gonna produce a number that's probably gonna be lower than we thought. And then some stores will have a better year, 'cause they welcome everybody, doesn't matter. But I would caution the board to not count those chickens just yet. It is, I think, we need to very seriously listen to our staff and wait till September before we implement this, and we need to do it across the board, and not just sing off the fire guys. Yes, the fire and EMS folks need financial reprieve. We've got a person sitting back there that waited to take the salary cut, to not get a raise, was willing to do that on her own, our financial director, and she's saying, don't do this. To go in and spend a recurrent expense out of fund balance is not a good idea. We, I just, you know, it's, we're talking 90 days, 90 days to, to really understand.
No, he just said October.
Well, September, we'll have the numbers in.
On October 1st, you're saying.
In October, you could implement it, so vote on it in September, that'd give us time to look at the numbers with an implementation date of October. So essentially, you'd go through, you know, the first quarter of the fiscal year without the increase.
I think one thing that we have to think about is the, if we, if we do look at September, we can do, like Ben said, the whole salary study with the COLA.
The whole thing.
If we do something now.
Shake it all down at one time.
We're putting a Band-Aid over a broken arm. To me, if we can wait and look at this with numbers, we can really fix the problem, we can do the whole salary study, we can give that COLA, and I think what, we just have a better idea. I think that we can have a discussion, maybe, maybe it becomes September and we can't do all of that. At that time, maybe we have the means to put that Band-Aid on it. But I think that September, we may be able to do a whole lot more for everybody and a whole lot more people.
In September, if we get here, get there, and the money's there, are we gonna make it retroactive to July 1?
That wouldn't be my recommendation as your manager. Just because from an accounting standpoint, I mean, I'll look at Sandra, but that's a lot of work that, that her staff would have to do, and not just the amount of work, but, I mean, you're still gonna have, I think, a downed sales tax year. And for better or worse, that three months is some savings, I mean.
Well, how much of our salaries are paid out of that sales tax?
We don't break the salaries down, what comes out of ad valorem and sales tax. So everything goes in to the pot, and keep in mind, the COLA comes from a lot of different places. It wouldn't just come from, I mean, what I've just given you is just a general fund number, but water employees are paid out of that, tourism employees are paid out of oc tax, but, you know, we don't, we don't take sales tax and property tax and keep them separate that way.
How many total fire EMTs do we have?
In the whole department?
No, the ones working Corolla.
Uh, just in Corolla?
Well, our professional, our combo.
In Corolla, we've got, let's see, I wanna say it's 39, give me a second, do the math in my head, 1, 2, 3, 4.
Supposed to be 13 times.
29? 39, okay. Thank you, Sandra.
What did the majority of them make with their overtime and everything?
Plus Knott's Island?
Um, that was not plus Knott's Island. Yeah, Knott's Island is gonna be two EMTs, four firefighters, they don't have a lieutenant, well, when I'm gonna be a lieutenant, they don't have a captain, captain shared with the mainland, I believe. So that's four, five, six, times three, so 18.
So a total of 37, both per, almost 40?
Um, it depends on how many hours they work.
Average.
Well, then, then on top of that, then, are we asking that, are we asking the Corolla Fire Department to do more duties than just for Corolla residents?
They do.
They do it all the time.
Should they?
I mean, we're gonna ask you for more and give you less.
And if they get, well, they're firefighters, you know that.
Well, no, no, my point is, is she would be asking them to come across, you know, the bridge all the time from each of the eight. Or do, or do we need, I think, a lot of volunteer firefighters have asked that question sometimes.
They pump water during the storm, too. Means they drill.
Kitty, I don't have the number just directly in front of me, but the average fire employee, it looks like from the spreadsheet I've got, is making somewhere around $55,000 a year. But that employee works 3,800 hours.
Yes.
Right.
That, I mean, that's the.
That's, that's the problem.
They're working seven, but basically for three.
And if the, if what I'm hearing is correct, we're gonna lose approximately 25% of our existing force in the next month and a half.
I mean, I guess the question I was asking, if we don't ask them to respond as much, would that help with their hours and fatigue?
They're still gonna have the coverage.
They're still on the clock.
Let me go back and address one thing, 'cause, 'cause this is, this bothers me, I'll just be upfront, I don't say that a whole lot, but it bothers me. We have done a lot of steps for the fire employees in the last year, and rectified a lot of issues that they've had.
Not of their own doing.
We've listened. I mean, we have.
Right.
So for us, for me to sit here as the manager and recommend that we wait three months to look at implementing this, and if they're gonna leave in a month and a half, and they're not willing to wait that extra month and a half, my opinion is there is another reason beside pay that they're leaving. Because if they loved their job outside of just the pay, they would stick around for that month and a half, if they've got some kind of light at the end of the tunnel. I think we'll be able to do it in September. But, I mean, there's more to it than just, just.
Right, but keep in mind, they've been at it for months, overworked, over-owed, I mean, they've been at it for months. This is not a woke up one day and went, you know what, I don't feel like doing this anymore. So I hear you, I agree to some degree. The reality is, there hasn't been a light at their end of the tunnel. We made a decision by this board, and it had to do with their vacation, and that took a ridiculously long time, and I get it, Munis is a wonderful system to deal with, and all that had to get tricked, and whatever. The point is, we made a commitment as a board, and it took an exorbitant amount of time to get it pulled off. So I, I hear you, and I get it, you know, that, folks, there's a light at the end of the tunnel, but the other thing I'd remind, I'd remind county employees, I don't know of any place in the, in the normal course of life where you get a retirement plan and a 401K. And I've worked at a multitude of companies, right? Your benefits here in Currituck County are pretty darn significant. And again, if the COLA's why you're gonna leave, there's other reasons why you're gonna leave, and it's not just the COLA. So I hear it, I get it, but I'm also, I've been around a little bit, and, you know, I understand.
And that just, well, I was bringing up a point, if they're working so much overtime and they're attached with the duties, do we look at what their duties entail? I mean, are we asking them too much to keep coming across the bridge?
How often do they come across the bridge?
I don't know.
It's not, it's not that required. So, and let me back up and say, and this is a discussion for maybe another day, but we can get into an analysis of the call data, and, and it's, it's a double-edged sword, because some people, especially younger individuals, get into the fire services of career because they like the excitement.
Right.
And they wanna go on calls.
Right.
And there are months where the call volume is very slow in Corolla.
And we're in hurricane season, and last I remember, the manning of the pumps was done by.
And there are times when it is very busy in Corolla.
So what I'm hearing is mostly overtime that is spent in Corolla, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, 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 sorry.
No, I was just trying to see if we're asking them to do more than just in the Corolla area.
But yeah, so I think you, I think you're, it's, it's a double-edged sword, you're losing some of the younger folks, I think, 'cause there's not enough to do certain times of the year. And the folks who are older and, and, you know, then in the summertime, they're having to work a lot of hours, because we don't have adequate staffing, and they burn out. And so you, you run through some of that, but, like I said, I mean, I'm, I don't think that this county has ignored their concerns, is what I'm trying to say. I can say, I can assure you they haven't, since I've been here. I mean, the salary study came in, and the salary study, after we reviewed it, initially did not take into account the number of hours that they worked. And so I asked the salary study company, I said, you've done this inaccurately, because you're assuming that they work 2,080 hours a year, and that's not what they work, so they had to go back and look at it. I mean, if, so it's not that the county doesn't care, or that we've done wrong by the fire employees, and I'm gonna get up on my soapbox one more time, I don't do this a whole lot, so I apologize. But these folks who have come here to work know the salary that they come here for when they take the job. We don't force them to come work for that amount of money. They know the salary when they took it. So, I mean, I know that they can go find more money somewhere else, and we hope to rectify that, but you know the salary when you take the position. I mean, that's, you probably don't know you're gonna have to work all the overtime because of the shortages, I get that part, but then, you know, there's, there's some other questions mixed in there that, like I said, we don't have to get into tonight. But I just.
All right. So, I have a question for Sandra. Let's say we come back here in September, when we come back here in September and we implement this, do the salary study, all of it, what kind of timeframe, if we, if we go to October 1, is that a doable thing for you to kind of flip the switch and go through and amend everyone's salaries across the board? Is that gonna, how big of a deal?
[inaudible]
Okay. Right, well, whenever the first pay period lands in October. And talk about Owen's suggestion about back pay. If we looked at it retroactive back to September 1, say, just a month, is there, is there a way to kind of stall that off and pay that out maybe later in October as a secondary, something or another?
You could offer it as a Christmas bonus, and that's gonna tell you if the money's gonna be there.
That, oh, okay, so, you know, I'm just looking at, if we, we're asking this of these guys to stick around for a little bit longer, and we say September, then if we can do that, if we, if we come back here in September and say, yep, we're good, we give it to the, we implement the salary study, the whole gambit, effective, you know, first pay period in October, and then look back at September, and then put that in as a Christmas bonus, is that something that's doable, something, you know, Sandra, your staff would have to be comfortable with in dealing with that, is that achievable, I guess, without you turning completely gray and pulling your hair out?
If we know that that's the, the direction of the board in September, from September to December is plenty of time to get the calculations together. I mean, just to make sure that I'm hearing you correctly, though, we would do that for anybody that got an increase?
Yes. I think, yeah, you can't, I think if we're gonna do it, and we look at, we look at going back, if we do have a look back, then we have to do it across the board, it has to be for everyone.
I'm gonna, I'm kind of agree with Bob. We had, we had put this COLA in to start this year, July 1. Unforeseen circumstances caused us to delay it. So when we look at it September, okay, let's do what we can, and then as far as the three months, then Christmas votes are something to make up, so it's, because in my, we should have started July 1, we're holding it because we don't know, so if we go back and the sales are good and the money's there, then let's go back like we're gonna implement it July 1.
And, and just the ball, this is a ballpark number, it'd be, it's roughly $116,000 a month. So every month that you, you go back and back pay.
I mean, we had planned on doing it July 1 this year, 2%, and if we, September, we find out we can implement it, implement it, and then in December, we'll have the Corolla numbers, then we just.
Keep in mind, we promised the COLA last year in the budget. We didn't see COVID coming, nobody did.
No, they didn't, so we wait September and do the pour of snow like we're talking about.
I mean, we have a starting point.
We can implement it the three months that they're waiting, and that way they get the full year, though.
The, the money's coming, I mean, it's, it's coming.
Right, it's coming, we just have to wait for the chickens to hatch.
They're gonna hatch.
Yep, and I don't think anybody has that feeling that it's not.
No, that way, then they, then technically it wouldn't be implemented from July 1.
Why implement it July 1 then? I mean, it is what it is, I don't care. Anybody in this room that rides around Currituck County, 168 and 158, the traffic, we're packed, they're here, the money's coming. Ben's lived here two years, I like Ben a lot, he's a great guy, he's a great county manager, he's lived here two years. The beach is slammed, it's the busiest it's been, the money's here, it's coming, and it's gonna just keep coming. So I, the whole government thing, that's one thing, I hate can kicking. It's gonna be here, should be done in July.
I don't think it's can kicking, I think it's prudent for us to be responsible with public money. And I am used to, I'm, I'm used to taking risks, that's why I'm in business for myself. You're used to taking risks, that's why you're in Businessville. You've taken those risks, Paul's taken those risks, but this is not our money.
I know it's not, but I'm saying it's not fair, and this, I'm a cop, this is a cop saying, well, firemen, those guys have been, and I know they signed up, they work 35 extra shifts to get the same pay pretty much as the other. That's not right, that's wrong, and it's been wrong for a long time. I know, but I mean, we can right the wrong and fix it, the money's gonna be there, it's already there. I mean, we were up on tap fees, we're up on all these other different things, and it's just, like I said, I'm done talking about it, my vote's July, and if, I'm the only one that votes July, and it ain't a political move, 'cause I don't care, but it's just, I'm trying to right the wrong, so, I'm done.
Okay. So I think we beat this horse around enough.
Somebody give us a summarization then of what.
Well, I don't, so I think what, what we've got to so far is to come back and look at this in September, if things are looking good, augmenta, put it in October, have, and then have some discussion on the look-back portion of it, if it's, if it's going back to September 1, maybe implement COLA some, some, at some point in there as well, on a look-back, like you suggested, and then, and then take it from there. So it's just a holding pattern right now, until we can be sure that we have got the money, or if we're gonna go into fund balances for a very small amount, not $1.3 million, almost, 1.4, basically, you can call it 1.4 million dollars. That money needs to be there to operate this county going forward, if something should happen. So, you know, it is something we need to be frugal with at this point in time. Does that accurately sum up kind of where we're at? Other than Kevin, I know where Kevin, we know where Kevin's at.
And we'll can, we'll have the rest of the discussion about the budget and schools on the 22nd, and we have to adopt the budget by the 1st of July.
Right.
So we're not voting on that tonight.
Right. Right.
I will say, in the past, we have voted a budget on June 30.
As well as July, you just have to have it by July 1.
Right. Well, let's try not to go take it to the wire.
Sandra and me would appreciate that.
Right, right.
So there is precedent.
Okay, so Ike, we didn't, we're not closing the public here. We didn't, uh, we're not closing the public hearing on this, right? It is still open until our next meeting, is that?
I think you, I think you already did close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing immediately, just for, for a vote, an adaptation at this point, right?
It could be, it's going to be for consideration of a motion of further discussion next Monday.
Okay, just making sure I have it right. Okay. All right, moving on. Item B, public hearing and possible action to authorize economic development incentive for the Cotton Gin in Jarvisburg, North Carolina. I see Mr. Lombardi coming up. He's been waiting patiently in the wings. Thank you, sir.
Yes, this is one time. Don't call Larry. Uh, no, which all these guys. No, um, Commissioner White and the other Board of Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present uh, this resolution regarding incentives for the Cotton Gin. As we all know, back in the fall, very tragic, where the building, it's iconic, been there for many decades, burnt to the ground. And, uh, it's very emotional for the rights and for many other people with some of the responses that have been uh, put out there on social media in support of the Cotton Gin. Uh, with that said, the rights want to move forward, build, um, and expand a bigger and better Cotton Gin. And, um, as the resolution has in front of, in front of you, you see the investment they'll need to make. Uh, those jobs that they had would be coming back. Um, and there'll be additional services that'll be provided with the new building. Um, but this particular resolution is just more or less a, it's a partial help towards the clearance of the property so they can start moving forward with the construction of the new facility. So I just stand here in front of you today, tonight, as the Economic Development Director. Uh, recommendation is to approve the resolution in front of you.
Mr. Chairman, a little more context to this request. This actually covers the, um, tipping fees for the, um, the debris that was left over after the fire. So the amount here is not, um, it's money that actually would go to pay for the landfill bill for materials from, from, um, from the fire. Um, Currituck County has recently, um, gotten more involved with economic development incentives. Uh, you all did one pretty recently for a Buffalo Distillery. Uh, that one was actually for the water tap fee, so it was a similar situation where it was to help offset some costs that was going to need to be paid to the county. And that particular, um, that particular one was for $14,395. Also in the past, and, and, um, the board has, has waived tipping fees for certain things in the past, but whenever you're talking about a business, an economic development incentive is, is really the, the right way to go about, go about funding, um, instead of just waiving fees, this is really the proper way. So what would happen in this case, the general fund would then reimburse the solid waste fund for that amount. So...
So any other business in the county could come before, get up to Larry and discuss any growth potentials or any economic help? So they could apply, talk to Larry, and depending on the criteria, could qualify for some county assistance, is that correct?
Well, yes, um, so there's a couple of things. Economic development incentives work a, a little differently than, um, like a grant, let's say. So in this case, with the, um, with the Cotton Gin, if you, if you look at the, the actual resolution, and I'm, I'm going to it here in my agenda packet, um, it says that they're going to make an investment of between $2,000 and $3,000, and that they will, um, I mean, million, $9,000, sorry. Two million, whoa, that was a quick, quick correction. Thanks, yeah. From like four directions. Um, $2 to $3 million, and, um, that they'll return 34 jobs to the community workforce. So with economic development incentives, if they don't follow through with that, then the board has an option, you know, to go back and say, "Well, you didn't, you didn't really invest in the economy the way you said you were going to." You know, that's the difference between waiving fees and tying it to some kind of economic development.
So just to be clear, this is not taxpayer money. This is a credit for them not paying the fee, right?
Well, taxpayer dollars will go to pay the fee.
But the fee would have come back in...
The, they would have paid the fee.
Right.
Now tax dollars will pay the fee. But with an economic development incentive, the idea behind that is that, you know, with, for $2 to $3 million, if they make that investment, we will recoup that money on property tax
In sales tax.
Very quickly, and in sales tax very quickly. And you're also generating the local economy by providing 34 jobs. So it's different than just waiving fees because somewhere we have to pay for that, you know?
But it, it's paying for itself.
It will. I mean, so, um, so yeah, I mean, the...
There's a payback from the Cotton Gin, basically, in the form of what their investment is going to be back in...
Yeah, so when they make that $2 to $3 million investment, that alone will, will pay back with property taxes.
Right.
This has been done before, but it was done by waiving the tipping fee.
Mm-hmm. And this is, and in my opinion, this is, this is the, uh, more appropriate way to do that. It's probably a little sounder process from a legal standpoint, and it recognizes that with businesses, they are going to make an investment that is going to provide economic return, not just to their employees and to their customers, but the county will see revenue from it in the form of property taxes. So by doing this, it helps incentivize them, and maybe that, that, that little bit is something that makes them decide, "You know what? We want to be here in Currituck County. We want to rebuild this facility," you know, and it, it kind of shows our support for that. Major industrial sites, I mean, it's not uncommon to see this. And it, we talked earlier in the work session about industrial sites. If we are lucky enough to ever court one of those, they will have a request for economic development incentives. It, it's common practice, so...
Yeah, there's, there's going to be a direct impact, economic impact, that indirect and also an induced. So there's other aspects. It's just not this that we'll be able to... My hand's too much.
I think of anybody that's been a good neighbor, the Cotton Gin certainly has. I think it's been an icon. People going to the beach and down at the, out of Bankstown.
Oh, yeah. Stopped in there growing up as a kid, and my wife did.
You always take guests there.
Take our friends there, right? When they come in, you got to get by there. So, okay. Um, anything further for the county manager or Mr. Lombardi at this point in time? All right, um, I'll open up the public comment, um, for this hearing. And I do not have anyone signed up. Would anyone like to speak to this this evening? Seeing no one coming forward, I will, uh, close the public comments section and open the floor for a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the economic development incentive, uh, for the Cotton Gin, the amount of $16,365.14.
Say it. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Carriage unanimously. Next item is item C, PB 20-09, Boswood Estates, Phase 1 and 2, request for a preliminary plot use permit for a 14 lot traditional look, traditional development located at the 3800 block of Keritoke Highway, Maple, parcel ID 006000053B0000 Crawford Township. With that, she gets this one. Oh, there she is. Let's follow.
And, um, Mr. Chairman, everybody will have to swear in that's going to offer testimony.
So do we have anyone, uh, that, anyone else that's going to speak to this? Please come forward and be sworn in, please. Some bibles. Left hand on a bible. Thank you. Uh, do you all affirm that your testimony you...
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't think we had bibles, so...
Black, well, I can read this.
Well, you, you, you would just do it slightly different. You would just say, "Do you swear to tell the truth?"
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? It'll help you guys.
There you go.
Thank you.
I thought you saw me come in.
All right, let's follow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the request before you tonight is for, next slide, please. It's for a 14 lot residential subdivision on property located in Maple. It is on the east side of Keritoke Highway and extends from Keritoke Highway to Coinjack Bay. It is 26.94 acres, just south of Major's Island Road, and is predominantly farmland. The section that you see shaded on the eastern side or the right side of the property that's highlighted is, is wetland area. The property is zoned general business. It is, um, also adjacent to property on the south that is zoned general business. That site is the former Palmer Inn and is currently residential with some active farmland in the rear. The property to the north is Major's Island Road. It is zoned single-family mainland, low-density residential and some agricultural uses as well. Uh, and the property to the east, of course, is Coinjack Bay. Property on the west side of Keritoke Highway is low-density residential, zoned general business. The proposed 14 lot residential development shown, um, on this plan, it will be developed in two phases. Uh, the lots located closest to Keritoke Highway will be developed in the first phase with a temporary turnaround, and then the remaining lots will be done in Phase 2. Uh, the owner may elect to do all of those phases at one time, but at least right now, they're showing them to be in two phases. The minimum lot size for development in the general business zoning district is 40,000 square feet, and each one of these lots is shown to contain that. The property on the east side, which we indicated was wetlands, that contains about 10.66 acres of jurisdictional wetlands that have been identified through a preliminary jurisdiction determination by the Army Corps of Engineers. And a portion of that, about 6.45 acres, is also coastal wetlands. The applicant proposes to dedicate 11.05 acres of open space, which is about 41%. And of that, 9.51 acres will go to a nonprofit, and the remaining 1.54 acres will be dedicated to the subdivision's homeowners association. This property also contains about 772 linear feet of shoreline along the Coinjack Bay. Uh, the applicant is not proposing any type of, um, public water access to the abutting waters, and no improvements in the wetlands are proposed. They are not required to do that, be, not required to provide public access to the water because the number of lots does not exceed 20. The infrastructure associated with this development will consist of a 20-foot paved road with roadside swales, open roadside swales, that will be located within a 50-foot right-of-way. A five-foot sidewalk will be proposed on both sides, located between the roadside swale and the, um, street trees. Interconnectivity is proposed to the south on the adjacent, uh, property that was the old Palmer Inn, although that is developed. It is active farmland in the rear and, uh, is potential for redevelopment because it is a large tract of land. They are meeting the interconnectivity score by proposing that connection. Uh, the subdivision will be served by county water and onsite septic. Drainage on this property will consist of lotline swales that will drain towards the rear of the property, um, ultimately to be conveyed to the wetland area, uh, as their drainage outlet. There are some internal farmland ditches that will be filled, and they will redirect that drainage through shallow grass swales. There are no streetlights proposed for this development. There's active farmland located just to the south on the Palmer, Palmer property, as I mentioned, and there is a 50-foot farmland buffer that is proposed in that area. Uh, in working with the applicant, uh, they were proposing to dedicate 0.36 acres of recreation and park area. That area was located on the southern side. Due to its small size, uh, and it would not, uh, provide adequate parkland area, uh, the county has elected to ta, select a payment in lieu of that dedication. The entrance road for this development, um, located on Keritoke Highway, it's not meeting the minimum separation between intersections. And we met with NC DOT, and the district engineer has provided us with written confirmation that because of the number of lots, the number of trips per day, as Laurie mentioned, um, a single-family dwelling is projected to generate 10 trips per day. It would not be at a level that would create any type of, uh, serious negative effect, and they felt like that the proposed location, the entrance to this development, would maintain a satisfactory level of access control on Keritoke Highway, and we accept that as, um, an allowance in the ordinance. Uh, because there are some of these properties that may not, for instance, this property, if you applied that separation, wouldn't have an access. So, um, you have to have allowances in your ordinance through working with NC DOT to locate these entrances in a manner that would, um, provide this satisfactory level of access control on Keritoke Highway and still provide access to the property. And they are doing that. Community meeting was not required for this development because of the number of lots. It's a blow up of the proposed 14 lots. Um, as you can see on the north side, there's, um, Major's Island Road. In this, that area is zoned SFM, and they are required to provide a perimeter buffer to that different zoning district. Um, they are required to have a Type B perimeter buffer. There are two options with the Type B perimeter buffer. It's a 10-foot option, which is more dense vegetation, and a 25-foot buffer. The applicant's selecting a 10-foot buffer in this instance. We do have some concerns with the placement of this buffer on that side because there are overhead power lines that extend along that boundary, along with some drainage improvements. And we want to make sure that there's adequate, adequate space in that area to accommodate the existing infrastructure, the proposed drainage improvements, as well as, uh, and the existing drainage improvements, as well as the proposed landscaping. And what we'd ask is if the board, um, determines that they will approve this request, that you consider the applicant providing uh, staff with a typical buffer detail that would show that all of that can be applied in that 10-foot area and still maintain, um, the UDO requirements and minimize the potential impacts on that adjacent property. The technical review committee has evaluated this pla... Oh, sorry. Yeah.
Slide there. I was just reading, what, what does that mean at the fire truck turnaround? There's, there's going to be a six-inch thick stone temporary place for a fire truck until this possible, this intersection is installed?
Correct, so...
So that could stay there permanently?
It could stay there permanently if interconnection is not, uh, made to that to that adjacent property.
Are we talking about the regular stone?
And it would have the support.
Okay.
It's required to meet the fire, fire truck, um, weights.
Okay.
And, and turnaround requirements.
All right, that's the only question I have, right?
Yeah, usually, it, usually they, they stay there for lo, longer than you'd like, but we have seen some actually develop those adjacent properties, and they have been eliminated. In this case, it will, um, they're proposing that it go back and to, i- if that connection's made, that they divest that land back either to the, uh, open space or to the front.
Uh, what was the, um, the total, the subdivision, you say it was 26 or 36.94 acres?
It's, the acreage is 26.94 acres. In the total tract, uh, once you remove the camo wetlands, it leaves you with a development acreage of 20.49 acres.
And circling back to, uh, you were talking about, uh, typical buffer details. Was that on the, the northern or southern boundary where you were concerned?
It's on the northern boundary.
Okay, and is there, was that, the drainage ditch was also there, is it not?
There is a drainage ditch in there as well.
So was there any, um, access for getting in there to clean that ditch out at any future time?
There, there, there will be an easement there as well. And all of that is in that 10-foot area.
Okay, thank you.
On lot number eight, the big lot. Did that individual ever wanted to put access to the sound for his personal lot? Is there any prohibition on him doing that?
So, this is a traditional subdivision, and right now, they are proposing all of that... of that be dedicated to open space. Will be no individual ownership or no individual improvements inside that area. That action would, would require, uh-
Oh, counsel.
-the applicant to come back to the board and ask for that permission. Uh, one thing to, that they have to make sure of is that open space must remain contiguous, and when you start placing these individual boardwalks and walkways, you, you lose that, uh, view shed and that contiguous open space. It's then broken up into segments.
So, but, and, uh, and if, if they were gonna do it, they could go down a boundary line, for instance, if they wanted to put a walkway out or some kind of-
Well, if, if they wanted to put one in for the community in the open space, they could certainly do that.
That was how, that was how they would achieve it, okay.
They're not proposing to do that at this time, but they could certainly do that.
Right, right, no, just for future, future knowledge, I mean.
Uh, the technical review committee has reviewed this project, and they recommend approval, uh, provided that perimeter buffer is addressed and, uh, they are able to provide us with some detail, um, that buffer detail that would show that they are compliant with the ordinance and that it minimizes the potential impacts on the adjacent lands. That open space will be contiguous and shall not contain private walkways or boardwalks, and that will be private boardwalks. A note shall be added to the final plat that will not allow septic systems or structures in a twenty-five-foot drainage easement that drains more than five acres. There is a drainage ditch, uh, on this property that will drain more than five acres, that this easement will be on private property. Some problems, uh, we do see on some of these developments is that drainage easement does not contain that note, and, uh, property owners wanna put, they wanna fence it in, they wanna put storage sheds, and in some instances, we've seen where, uh, they wanna put septic systems in there as well. Uh, so we wanna make that clear going into it, that we would recommend that that area remain clear for maintenance purposes, um, and not, not have any structure in there because a property owner doesn't necessarily, when they buy a piece of property, they don't, they're not necessarily understanding that what that drainage easement means, and if the septic system's in there, they're unaware that it's in there and could be potentially damaged if, if someone needed to go in there and clear out that ditch. Uh, and then another issue we're running into, and the fire official has made the recommendation that no parking signs be placed along the streets at the entrance and at intersections. That would be approximately forty-five signs. Uh, we're, we're having some issues with school buses, um, not being able to get down some streets, uh, due to on-street parking, which is not allowed. With a preliminary plat, uh, you are also tasked with the use permit review standards, and you have to make a finding that the applicant has demonstrated that the proposed use will be consistent with those findings. Generally, the first two, uh, the applicant's responsible for presenting evidence on those. Uh, staff usually manages the, uh, items with land use plan or other officially adopted plans, as well as adequate public facilities. So, this project is located in the full-service and conservation area as identified in the two thousand six land use plan. The area that is slated for development is in that full-service area, and the wetlands, which are being conserved, uh, are in the, uh, conservation area. It's also in the Barco Coinjack sub-area, and, um, the Maple Barco Small Area Plan is also, um, on this property as well, or it, this property is actually identified in the Maple Barco Small Area Plan. It's shown as mixed use, and mixed use, um, typically would include residential uses. So there are detailed policy statements in your packet, and I won't read each one of them, but I will summarize that for the two thousand six land use plan, the, um, policy statements that apply to this project would be ES two, where non-coastal wetlands shall be conserved for their important role that they play. ES three, coastal wetlands shall be conserved for the value they play in protecting water quality and providing critical habitat. HN one, uh, to encourage development to occur at densities appropriate for their location. Full-service areas would be permitted at a higher density because of the availability of infrastructure, as well as the similarity to existing development patterns. WQ five, which supports development and that preserves the natural features of the site, including existing topography and significant existing vegetation, are encouraged. Um, the residential lots are predominantly in the full-service classification, where residential is contemplated at two, two units per acre, um, two units per acre. The density for this development is at point six-eight dwelling units per acre. The Maple Barco Small Area Plan, which is used with the land use plan, um, it too characterizes, uh, densities at a similar, um, density allocation at two units per acre. Just wanna make sure we've covered everything. Um, as it relates to adequate public facilities, based on the two thousand four Tischler and Associates report, the fourteen residential lots will generate four elementary students, one middle school student, two high school students. These students will be, um, placed at Central Elementary School. That's the district that they are slated for. Central Elementary School is currently at seventy-seven percent capacity, based on the January twenty-twenty ADM. They are also District Four Currituck Middle School. Currituck Middle School is at seventy percent capacity, based on the January twenty-twenty ADM, and Currituck High School, uh, the students would be ju, District for there. The high school is at eighty-four percent capacity, but we combine those with NAP, and they are at a combined capacity of eighty-five percent. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Does it look like, thank you. Uh, at this time, I'll, uh, invite the applicant, her representative, or her representative to come up and- Present case.
I'm Mr. Turner, I'm in Elizabeth City, and I'm here representing Boswood Estates LLC. I'm gonna let Jason Mizell with the Timmons Group do all the technical talking. Thank
Good evening, board. Thank you for having us here this evening. My name is Jason Mizell, Timmons Group. Uh, staff has done a very detailed analysis of what we presented, uh, this evening. Um, wanna address a couple of, of quick items, uh, a couple that, that staff, uh, alluded to. Uh, the northern property line, is that the quicker? Yep, that's good. Thank you. Um, so there's the ten-foot Type B buffer there. There's also gonna be an internal, uh, twenty-five-foot drainage easement on the backs of this lots. The, uh, buffer is an open space. Um, the intent here is to likely have a little bit of a berm there. There is a drainage, a little bit of a drainage swell along the private road, uh, that parallels the road, uh, kinda right down the property line. Uh, one of the big things is, we don't have a whole lot of off-site drainage. We do have a little bit. The road is a lo, is some of that drainage. Uh, there's a unfortunately buried crosspipe underneath, just before you get to Mr. Majors' property, that we're, we're, we plan to help address that, get that redirected into the, uh, outlet ditch. Um, we wanna bypass that water, you know, we don't wanna bring that water into our development, so we'll maintain their ability for that water to, to get off-site, uh, to come, come through and get to the, to the sound and, uh, not be impacted by this development. Uh, the lots will have their own rear property line swell to contain our runoff and route it, uh, ultimately to the outlet, so that there is some, some storage inside the development. Um, we can certainly put together a detail to give staff, uh, it's typically something that we would do at the design phase. Uh, again, we're still at preliminary plat. We've not done our formal grading design. We haven't done our complete stormwater analysis. Uh, that will all come in the next phase of this project. Um, but, uh, that is certainly something we plan to address. We hope that we can, uh, ho- hopefully the pipe that's buried there is, is in good condition. If not, uh, the developer will work with Mr. Majors and the property owners to get access to try to replace that if it needs to be replaced. That was something that, uh, Soil and Water brought up in their review as well. Um, there is a little bit of, uh, drainage off of the Palmer, Old Palmer Inn, uh, up at the front end. That too will be collected in a property line swell and bypassed to the outlet ditch. Again, trying to make sure those properties can continue to go where they've always gone without having any, any backing up of that stormwater. Um, one of the advantages this site has is that we've got a direct outlet. We've got the Currituck Sound right there. Uh, our drainage, actually, there's actually kind of a little ridge right there at the top of bank of the DOT ditch. Their roadside drainage goes, goes west, all of ours goes east. Uh, there's an alternative within the stormwater manual that allows for, uh, drainage analysis to show that there's less than a, less than a point zero-one feet impact, uh, net impact to the sound water or to the outlet water, um, and that's what we're proposing here. Again, we will do all that modeling to, to show that information when we get to that design phase. Um, the firetruck access that, uh, Mr. Payman asked about, uh, the stone is actually a recommendation from, uh, Mr. Bill Noons. Um, that way, in the event, if there's ever a connection, that it would be a little easier to pull that up as opposed to asphalt, um, knowing that DOT is not going to maintain it. Um, DOT has expressed concern over maintaining that, so that's why it's not in the right-of-way. There's a, uh, right now, there's shown as an open space area around that stub, uh, so that it becomes the HOA's responsibility. Um-
Can I ask a question? Interconnectivity, would that come behind, like, the Palmer Inn, going to, like, the road for the state employees grading?
Yes, uh, so-
Five-e-drive or whatever?
That's in that farmland area behind the Palmer Inn, which is the most likely place that development would occur if they did not, say, demolish the old home that's there. Uh, there's about, I think there's about, maybe about four and a half, five acres of, of farmland in that property. So there is the potential for someone to extend that, put a couple of lots on either side if, if they so chose, and still not impact the, uh, the Palmer Inn residents. Um, so that, that made the, the most logical cho, logical choice to put that there. Um, the wetlands, again, we've got, you know, pretty hard, hard line there in the sand, if you will, uh, no impacts to the wetlands. Um, the desire of the developer is to dedicate that to a nonprofit. If for some reason that a nonprofit can't be found to, to, to take that, uh, then the HOA will revert back to having ownership of that. Um, one of the things that the developer looked at, uh, came to me many, many months ago to look at this property, and, and the desire was to find somewhere, kind of in central Currituck, for, for some, for residential development. Uh, one of the key points being that within four miles of this property, you've got four schools, county offices, county school offices, sheriff's department, ag, parks and rec, and trying to fulfill a need in this part of the county for some housing for our local government. Uh, you've got state employees right there. So, again, as another en- enticement, if you will, to try to bring in retained employees, they saw that as a benefit to, to the county by finding an area in central Currituck that could be developed. Um, thankfully, as someone noted earlier, we're in the southern, central southern area. We've got nice sandy soils, so that definitely helps, uh, helps with the stormwater. Density, Donna's mentioned, uh, the Kama land use plan looks at about, you know, two units per acre or less than a unit per acre. So, uh, definitely keeping it low density, trying to keep it to a low impact. Um- Students, like I said, four, four, one and two is your numbers, so not a significant impact to the students, uh, to the addition of students. Um, the phasing, uh, I'll talk a little bit about that. Um, with what we've had going on the past several, several months, no one's got a magic ball. When this thing goes to full permitting, what will the market be like? So they, they've asked to do phasing on the plans, so that it's prepared for. Uh, I think their desire is if the market is still stable and they're able to get enough, uh, ink on contracts, that they could go the whole thing and not have to phase it. Um, but they wanted the option in the event that something did happen with the residential market that would be unfavorable. So that is why you see the phasing. Uh, the first phase would be lots one through six, uh, with a stub into the cul-de-sac road. Uh, that would be your firetruck access turnaround area. Uh, but that would be paved as part of, part of Phase One, as far as the stub itself. Um, pedestrian access, we are showing the sidewalk on the left-hand side, if you follow along the road, to stop right there at the firetruck turnaround. Uh, that last ninety-five feet or so will be bonded for. Uh, again, if, if the connection's ever made, the access comes out, then the sidewalk could be extended to that neighboring property, and, and that money would be set aside for I think that's the, the only other things I can think of. The staff has not already covered. I'll be happy to ask, uh, answer any questions you guys have or, uh, any of the public here.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, I'll open up the public comment portion. Um, first person I have sign up is, uh, Jason Mizell. Mizelli? No, that was you, didn't mind, sorry. Going down the list. Um, Anissa Griffith?
She was, she was here earlier.
Okay. Uh, Joe Robertson?
Yes, sir.
Come on up, sir.
Uh, I have a question.
You have to, give us your job. I need you to, Joe, Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
I need you to come on up to the lecture and put, state your name and address for the record, please, and then you can ask-
Uh, Joseph L. Robertson, one eighteen Robertson Lane, Maple.
Thank you, and then what was your concern, sir?
Uh, I was just curious, uh, on the ditch you're talking about.
Which ditch?
Now, on the, on the north side, you talk about on the line right there, that's the ditch. I mean, you, could you say something to me about the ditch on the other side and the culvert not draining?
That's over on, towards the eastern end, uh, just before you get to Mr. Majors' house there. There's a buried culvert under the dry, under the access drive.
Right, but that ditch has never been from the highway back. It's only, I just wanna clear that.
Absolutely, no. We're talking about the outlet ditch that parallels the wood line.
On the end, yeah, yes, sir.
Uh, trying to, trying to reconnect that so it actually gets out of there, because right now, it's not draining.
Not on this end?
No.
I think they dug it wrong. It's draining back.
That, that appears to be the case. Uh, so that is one of the re, remedies that we-
You're not gonna put one on the north end?
No, sir. The, the only ditch or swell that will be on the north end will be internal to the subdivision.
Okay, no, I got you.
On the south side of the buffer.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir. Uh, David Majors?
My name is David Majors. I own the property Majors Island Road, and, uh, I am, uh, curious as to what kind of, I see that they've got access, is that one sixty-eight? I, I would like to have a plat of this, because I've, I've not seen it before. Uh, now, I have the private road coming off of one sixty-eight, which is a thirty-foot right-of-way from one sixty-eight back to my property, which is adjacent to the Robinsons Lane. Uh, I just wanna make sure that, that there's no excursion onto my property relative to the property owners. Is there gonna be a berm in there? I don't have any information at all, and, you know, I'm, I'm not around the corner. I'm from, coming down from Baltimore, so I would like to have that information taken back with me, and-
Well, I think this gentleman behind you could probably enlighten you a little bit is what they plan to do.
So, as we've discussed with, with the planning staff, we're required to provide buffer, uh, strip along-
along our, inside of our property, nothing onto your property. And that's a vegetated buffer, densely vegetated. There's, uh, canopy trees, understory trees, shrubs. It'll be like a screen across there. Uh, so that will, number one, it'll provide some visual buffer for you, but it'll also prevent homeowners from hopefully going across that line. Their property will stop short of the actual main boundary line. So that buffer is in between their property and your property.
Okay. Because I have water lines going back Major Island Road.
All of our improvements will be to, on the inside of our property. The, with the only exception, if we have to, would be your culvert if we need to fix it. Because you've got a buried culvert under that drive right now that's not, not draining properly. We want to take care of that when we do this development. So that's something that until we get into that process and actually are able to dig out that end and see what it looks like, if it's completely damaged, uh, we've soil and water both that I agree that if it's damaged, we need to replace it.
And, and not disturb my water line?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay, now can I have information on what you're doing?
Absolutely. Do you have the full size or anything? I mean, I can, I can get him this half size if he, if he wants it, but I'll be happy to, if you want to.
Okay, can I have your business card, please?
When we're done, I will certainly give you my information and I'll get you anything you need.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Major. Thank you.
All right, I don't have anyone else signed up. Anyone else like to speak on this matter this evening? All right, seeing none, I will post the public comment. And, uh, any discussion from the board on this this evening? Looking forward for motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve PB 2009 Boswood Estates with the TRC conditions of approval because the applicant has demonstrated the proposed use meets the use permit review standards of the UDO. The TRC conditions of approval consisted of, uh, A, the open space shall be contiguous and shall not contain private driveways or boardwalks. A 25-foot drainage easement shall be provided along all conveyance systems that drain more than five acres. The easement shall include the conveyance system and an additional 25 feet from the top of embankment. The easement will extend onto private lots. No septic system or structure shall be located in the easement and a note shall be added to the final plot, uh, plat, I'm sorry. Number, uh, three, the width of the perimeter buffer will be 10 feet and will be, uh, near overhead power lines and drainage improvements. I'd like to also add to this that the developer work with county staff to ensure that the species of trees that are selected are conducive to being grown underneath, uh, power lines. A typical perimeter buffer detailed of the existing conditions and proposed improvements shall be submitted to ensure compliance of the UDO and minimize the potential effects to surrounding lands. No parking signs shall be placed along the street at intersections and the entrance, and that should be approximately four to five signs. The use will not endanger, uh, the public safety or health. The use will be in accordance with county health and safety standards and those recommended by the Alamo River Regional Health Services in regards to onsite wastewater systems. The use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. Lands to the north have been developed for single-family homes as well as the properties across the highway. Lot sizes proposed are in keeping with what is adjacent and the wetlands will be preserved. The use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans, specifically the 2006 land use plan classifies this site as full-service and conservation land use classification in the Barco Coin Jock Airport Subarea. The area intended for residential lots is predominantly in the full-service land use classification. The full-service area contemplates a residential density base to be two units per acre. The policy emphasis for the Barco Coin Jock Airport Subarea indicates residential development density should be limited to one to two units per acre. In areas where onsite wastewater is proposed and other county services are or may be limited, the proposed development density is point six eight units per acre. Proposed use is in keeping with the policies of the plan, some of which are Policy ES2, non-coastal wetlands, including freshwater swamps and inland non-title wetlands, shall be conserved for the important role they play in absorbing floodwaters, filtering pollutants from stormwater runoff, recharging the groundwater table and providing critical habitat for many plant and animal species. Policy ES3 coastal wetlands shall be conserved for the valuable functions they perform in protecting water quality and providing critical habitat for the propagation and survival of important plant and animal species. CAMA use standards and policies for coastal wetlands shall be supported. Policy WQ5, development that preserves the natural features of the site, including existing topography and significant existing vegetation, shall be encouraged. The Maple-Barco Small Area Plan, an official adopted plan, classifies the site as mixed use. The mixed use designation is characterized by a diverse mix of land uses, including residential. Proposed use is in keeping with the policies in the Maple-Barco Small Area Plan, some of which include LU6, which encourages buffers for uses that are developing adjacent to environmentally sensitive areas. LU9, evaluate development proposals using future land use map policies for the Maple-Barco Study Area to determine the desired density, character of growth and level, or services appropriate for the study area. Finally, number four, the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. The pro, the proposed subdivision contains 14 residential lots. Based on the student generation rate study prepared by the Tischler and Associates in 2004, proposed subdivision will generate four elementary school students to attend central elementary, one middle school student, and two high school students, both, both to attend Currituck Middle and/or Currituck High School. According to Currituck County Schools, the proposed subdivision, uh, rates or occupancy rates is 77% of January ADM, 85% at Currituck Middle School, 70% at Currituck High School. 84% based, actual capacity based on January. That is not actual capacity. That includes. Why do we have a fourth? Okay. And the wetlands will be preser, preserved. The use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other official adopted plans. Uh, the 2006 land use plan classifies the site. I already read that. That ends my motion.
I'm going to need you to go back and clean that up for me, sir.
What's that?
I'm going to need you to go back and clean that up.
Okay. Everybody, hold on.
All right, do we have a second? Kevin Segans, uh, any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here's unanimously. You guys need a break before we jump into the next one. All right, we'll take five and then come back and jump into the next public hearing item. All right, everybody, let's settle down.
I've already, I screwed it up.
Move on to the next agenda item.
You may be right. Sorry.
All right, next item is item D, PB 20 dash zero seven, Currituck County Alternative Water Supply for Fire Flow Text Amendment. Request to amend the Unified Development Orders, Chapter Six, Section 6.2.4, to allow use of water shuttling as an alternative means of meeting fire flow water supply requirements for lands not serviced by county water system and to amend references in Chapters Four, Five, and Six from Fire Marshal to Fire Code Official.
Goodness Turner, do you, uh, guide us through this this evening?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. So this text amendment was initiated by the county in order to allow the use of alternative, uh, water supply to meet required fire flow standards and also revises the term Fire Marshal of Fire Code Official to be consistent with NC Fire Code. The ordinance change was discussed at the retreat in February and staff was later directed to bring forward language to include this flexibility, uh, to allow water shuttling for, uh, to meet fire flow. So the ordinance requires that any new development needs to meet the fire flow requirement. And so some development that's on, that's on the county water system will generally meet that through the hydrant and, and flow through the hydrant. And then when you don't, when you're not required to be on county water, there's a list of specific allowable sources that you can use. So the ordinance is very specific about what you can use to meet the fire flow. And that's here, uh, in the text. So the ordinance currently says fire ponds, canals, wells, cisterns, above-ground storage tanks, or water lines where a community water supply system is installed, is allowed, or any combination of those features. So staff's proposed language includes B, that the fire department mobile water supply approved by the Fire Code Official is an allowable source. Continues to include C, any combination of the above, and then adds also D, an alternative means approved by the Fire Code Official. Uh, this could include, uh, different construction standards or sprinklering of a building. And there may be other things that, that you can do, but, um, uh, Chief, uh, Building Inspector, Fire Code Official, Bill Nunes is here. So if you want to ask him technical questions about it, you can do so a little bit later. I did want to point out one other change in the ordinance on page 78 of your agenda packet. And this is a strike through the word more in the section, uh, that talks about fire hydrants required. This is if the development is serviced by the county water system. It currently, I'm just going to read that last sentence, says, "The Fire Code Official may authorize or require a deviation from this standard if, in the opinion of the Fire Code Official, another arrangement more satisfactorily complies." And so we're proposing to strike that more, uh, to give, to continue to give the, the Fire Code Official flexibility there. So this, I believe that this amendment really was more, uh, in response to some residential development that we've been seeing where, uh, if you're just doing a few lots, you're required to put in a pond. And so water shuttling could potentially reduce the size of the pond or in some cases, depending on what a fire department, um, can handle, uh, could even, uh, mean that you, you, you don't need to put it upon because the fire department can handle the required, uh, flow. So.
Came directly from a board guidance at the, um, legislature.
I guess let me just jump in real quick then. When you're addressing, um, uh, fire, uh, B there, uh, mobile water supply approved by fire, the only concern I would have, and I think some of them, and they can speak probably, um, on the volunteer fire departments is, I, as long as we limit it to what they were certified for or what the departments can handle, this velvet needs a higher flow rate than the shuttle. I mean, they could shuttle or would certify to shuttle. I mean, we need to limit it to that level.
So we've actually discussed that and, um, we've talked about actually having a form to be filled out by the local, uh, fire chief, um, to certify what, what they can haul. And then that would need to be approved by, uh, the chief fire code official also.
And that would be for us then to, as part of the requirements for the vote or something?
It, yeah, so that form would be, we were talking about having that as part of our administrative manual, you know, our administrative manual is a companion to the UDO that gives, lays out processes and forms, um, for approvals. So the thought was, is that along with this text amendment, that in order for the Fire Code Official to make the determination that yes, the, the water shuttling is available, that we would have actually a notarized form by the, the fire department.
One thing to point out is that that's going to be governed by the Fire Code of North Carolina.
That's, and from what I've been told understood, when a station gets ISO certified as water shuttle, that it's, it's legit.
And when they're, yeah, when they're certified, that number.
When they have ISO certification, it meets, it is no, it's from an ISO perspective, there's no difference between that and a fire hydrant. Now, we understand it's a little more complicated, but the other thing to put it in perspective is to how we got here in the first place. And that was a, a rule that was put in place on a state level that, and, you know, there are multiple districts in the state that don't even come close to being able to do this, predominantly due to geog, uh, geography, right? They're on the mountains or they're in the mountains. And so this was a, a, um, rule put in place that was specifically targeted. I, I, I don't understand small housing developments. So these are typically on bigger lots, right? And with more room in between. So, uh, this is trying to alleviate a gap in what our folks are having to comply with.
Basically what this does is just give options that weren't there.
Correct.
So basically, if you can really boil it down to, to really just section D, so if something meets the Fire Code, it's now going to be an allowed.
Correct.
Method to meet this.
Right. We're not, we're not setting ISO certification standards. We're just saying if you get ISO certified, that's good enough for meeting this requirement.
As long as it meets the Fire Code.
Correct.
Well, I think it's important to understand how many lots triggers the usage of this.
I believe it's three.
Three.
Three lots.
You can build two. When you get to number three, you're supposed to have a fire pond.
Well, you've got to have a means to.
I'm sorry. Right, 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 right.
Right. So somebody had three lots, they wanted to give their kids, they'd have to put some type of alternative.
Correct.
And they still would if the fire department isn't certified for shuttling.
Correct.
Right, but this gives them the availability of being able to utilize what the state allows.
My, my understanding is not every fire department has the same capability of falling.
That's also correct.
But this gives options. Depending on where you are in the county. It does, it gives options. And actually, to your point, um, then the planning board actually heard this on May 28th and recommended approval with that change that, that you said. I mean, so they, they were discussing the cost of, of the requirement and the difference of who bears the cost if you water shuttle versus a cost on the developer of putting in a pond or some other onsite water source. Um, they also, uh, were concerned about potential extra responsibility on the fire department. And, um, Chief Pointer, who actually is here tonight, uh, pointed out just the fact that that certification is not a guaranteed certification. You have to every, and I'm not sure what the timeframe is, but you have to get recertified for, uh, a certain amount. And generally, uh, those certifications are done through mutual aid agreements with neighboring fire departments. So the planning board did recommend approval of this particular language, striking that item, uh, uh, C that was previously there. Yeah, or B rather. So. So as you know, the, uh, advisability of amending the text of the ordinance is a matter committed to the legislative discretion of the board. And on page 76 of your agenda packet, there are, uh, some, some factors that you may want to consider, uh, in deciding this amendment. And in making a decision, the board should adopt a statement of consistency and reasonableness that describes whether the, the decision is consistent with all county adopted plans that are applicable and explains why the decision is reasonable and in the public interest. Uh, staffer recommends approval of the request as submitted and suggests the following statement of consistency and reasonableness, that the requested zoning, uh, text amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the 2006 land use plan, including Policy WS4, that the county endorses utilities extension policies that avoid those parts of the county best suited for agriculture and to protect farmland from development pressures brought about by such utilities. Exceptions to this policy may include extensions for major economic development initiatives and extensions to address imminent public health problems or related environmental hazards. And the request, uh, actually in your, in your agenda packet, there's also a few more policies on page 80 and 81 of the packet. Consistent land use policies. I won't, I won't read them, but that is Policy PP2 and Policy WS3. The request is reasonable and in the public interest because it's consistent with the 2006 land use plan, and it is not in conflict with the provisions of the ordinance, and it continues to allow limited development without the requirement for extension of county water lines and farmland in rural areas. And staff recommends approval. And I could answer any other questions you have at this time, or maybe Bill could answer them better than I can.
Okay, questions, Mr.?
The other thing I would just throw out there is this is by no means to be considered a substitute where. a substitute where county water is available for fire hydrants.
Right.
This would not mitigate or eliminate that requirement.
Or that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Well, at this time, then, I will open up the public comment portion of this and have Ron Pointer sign up to speak this evening.
Good evening, sir. Hi, I'm Ron Pointer. I live at forty-one seventy-four Carrickahoe Highway. I'm chief of Crawford Township Volunteer Fire Department. Most of my comments tonight will be repeat of my comments at the planning board meeting. The fire department has some concern with what we feel like is shifting a little bit of responsibility of the developer over to the volunteer fire department in regards to water supply. As I said at the planning board meeting, I've lived in Carrickahoe County all my adult life, own property in Carrickahoe County, the property I own either myself or my family bought and paid for. I pay taxes on it every year. Nothing annoys me more than for someone to tell me what I can or can't do on my property. So I fully appreciate people's ability to use their properties they like, but we also have to keep everyone safe. And for our fire department to get the water shuttle certification that we got from Department Insurance was a joint effort between our department and our neighboring departments, even departments in neighboring counties. And it is a certification that has to be reevaluated from time to time, and there's no guarantee that we'll maintain that certification. That doesn't mean we still don't have ability to shuttle water. I've been in the fire department, in fire service long enough that there were no hydrants, there was no water system in Carrickahoe County when I started. All we had was water shuttle. So it's not that we don't have the ability to do it, it's just a concern that some of the responsibilities be, being shifted on to the volunteer fire departments. That's basically what I have. Any questions?
Have you spoken with the other volunteer fire departments? Are they kind of in the same feeling you are that this, I'm guessing you're thinking this is not a great idea because?
It's, you know, in a perfect world, every residence in Carrickahoe County would be within a thousand feet of a fire hydrant capable of flowing a thousand gallons or more. But as great a place Carrickahoe County is, we don't live in a perfect world. And I know we need alternatives, but it's still, the fire department's view is anytime there's a water system available, a hydrant's available, it's a better solution for us. It takes when, when we have, when we can tap into a water system, it takes less manpower, it takes less equipment, and it's just a little bit easier for our department to deal with.
Yeah, I think that's what we noted in here, part of it is if the water is available, that's going to be primary needs. We're not going to substitute any type of hydrants or if you have any water, anything that to, you know, for shuttling. So if water's available, a hydrant's available, that's going to be.
That's number one.
That's number one, right. This is kind of the last ditch.
Yeah, this is just the last ditch, there's numbers back move or something, there's no hydrants back there, and, you know, and again, if the chief signs, if the chief signs that favor saying they can provide that, then, I mean, there's a process to go through. We're not just going to say you're committing the whole time to do it, but if you meet.
And there's, there's, and I understand, and that is by no means saying it's now the fire department's responsibility to come up with the solution, because we all know that in a rural area, all fire departments do the best they can with what they have to work with. There's an added risk by having a pond, right? For every three houses, or as soon as you get to three houses, that is a daily risk to, you know, you look at some of the families that are moving into the county, that is a daily risk, in my opinion, to little kids, where, I mean, let's be honest, the odds of a house catching fire are not very significant, right? But that's part of what's going on, the risk of an attractive nuisance compared to we'll do the best we can. And that's understood.
Ponds don't always work.
And I was.
Ponds are a lot of work, a lot of maintenance, a lot of.
Weren't you at my house? How would have gotten into that pond worked? Not well, everybody got stuck.
Yes, sir. One point for commissioner payment, you know, what we would be looking for is just what level the fire department is certified at by ISO. So it wouldn't be on a case by case, but, I mean, we would ask at each case, but.
Yeah, but like you said, you've got to get them certified, and so it's not a guarantee it's going to be all the time, because here comes, here lies the issue, if a development gets approved.
It's not, keep in mind, it's not a development.
If the three lots, okay, they use the water shuttle as a means, and then the fire department loses their shuttling certification, where do we go from there?
Well, I think that's a question that Bill News would probably need to address, but we don't have the ability to go back and require.
No, we don't.
Or make sure the pond is still, I mean.
Let me, and let me ask one other question. Laurie, what is the largest subdivision that could use this section?
It would be a three lot, it would be a three lot pond or something.
So only up to three lots?
Well, up to five, I would bet.
Yeah. Just wanted to make sure that that.
Yeah, it's not going to be a big.
And it's only just where rural areas.
This is just for areas that are not.
East Ridge.
East Ridge Road.
East Ridge Road.
And it doesn't mean that the county's not going to stop trying to put water lines in up and down these roads.
Somewhere there where there's no.
It's just a matter of being able to provide some level of service to people that might want to develop those three lots for their kids, or five lots for their family on that road.
And like I said, I get that, I mean, I've lived here all my adult life, and we do like to do what we want to do with our property, but we just don't want to see an ordinance hinging on a fire department certification that there's no guarantee. And we don't have to necessarily hold that certification to still be able to shuttle water, but we just don't want to see this ordinance hinge on the certification, that could go away. We live in a volunteer world, and it takes the cooperation of a lot of different departments, and in a volunteer world, the wheels can fall off at any time.
And we also understand, just because you've got a lot of water, doesn't mean you're going to be able to put the fire out as well, right? So, I mean, we get it, we get it.
One other point that this is talked about, I think with staff, just, the other thing that we would have, just a, or I just have just a small concern about, is we would not want this policy to drive the board to increasing fire apparatus.
Exactly, sorry, yep. No, that would not.
Yeah.
We've got enough challenges with apparatus.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
And just because they can't show a warrant and are certified for a certain number, doesn't mean that a fire pond is going to be required, some other apparatus, some other thing, it may just not be even large, it depends on what they're applied for and what.
But it might be a little small fire pond.
Small fire pond.
Most probably so.
So a small water state.
As we discussed at the planning board meeting, through the, working through the fire code officer, some alternative things could be presented, different construction, fire resistant construction, our residential sprinkler systems, there's other options that, you know, that was discussed in the planning board meeting, it could be opened up as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
And if y'all will give me, excuse me for stepping off subject for just a moment, but from the discussion earlier tonight in regards to the expense of paid fire departments and everything, like use this opportunity to remind everyone that our volunteers have a tremendous value in our county, and we are constantly, as a volunteer fire department, recruiting We don't, we'll take anyone as a volunteer. You don't have to be willing to rush into a burning building when everybody else is rushing out. If that's what you want to do, we'll gladly train you to do so, but we can use a lot of supports, staff as well, administrative, clerical.
And briefly, your juniors, how old do you have to be as a junior?
I'm sorry?
As a junior?
Eight.
Yeah.
Fourteen.
Okay. So fourteen-year-olds out there, there you go.
If you're interested in serving your community, please, please let us know. You can contact our fire department, our county website is www.crawfordfire.org, and we're always happy to have volunteers.
We appreciate what y'all do.
Absolutely. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just want to clarify, you were asking about the number of lots that you could potentially use this for when you're not on county water, and I think the intent was for just a few lots, but actually, if you, you could potentially use water shuttling for more than three lots if you're not on county water. And so, Bill, you know, Mike, I have this.
Things you need to understand, keep hearing the three lots, the third lot is the trigger for the fire code and water supply. The fire code specifically calls out that you have to have an adequate approved water source. That can be through a county system, it can be through ponds, it can be through tanks, above-ground and below-ground tanks, it can be through cisterns. So in this instance, we're talking about water haul and shuttling. You have to realize that fire flow on a single-family dwelling, depending on the setbacks, could be five hundred gallons, it could be seven hundred fifty gallons. If I asked you, can you haul seven hundred fifty gallons down East Ridge Road for those projects, are you going to sign off on that? That's what you need to think about. It's not just hauling water makes it okay, you've got to meet the minimum flow for a duration of one hour, and that's five hundred or seven hundred fifty gallons. And our UDO calls out that we are based on the ISO method of water supply. So, yeah, we can shuttle water, we do it all the time. There could be a fire hydrant right there, and you're going to shuttle water still because what you're hooking up to that, you're hooking up down the road bringing water in, right, Ron, right, Hayden? So you're going to, most fires, they shuttle water. They had hydrants down by Cotton Gin, they shuttled water. Brindley Building, they had the old tank set up there, the PVC thing, they were dumping water, they were pulling from hydrants, they fought a fire. They're going to haul water. You know, they're going to haul water. It should not be your main source of fighting a fire. So that's what you've got to consider, and I gave, I give these numbers out, distance between buildings, this is a single-family dwelling based on ISO, duration of one hour, more than thirty feet, five hundred gallons, twenty-one to thirty, thirty feet, seven hundred fifty gallons per minute, eleven to twenty feet, thousand gallons per minute, zero to ten feet between buildings, fifteen hundred gallons. You're not going to get that with water haul. There's going to have to be a combination of something, water haul, hydrant, above-ground tank, pond. I looked at the alternative method, be able to tell a developer, because I don't have that now, to say that, hey, if you put residential sprinklers in, maybe I can get the chief to be okay with that, or, hey, maybe you've got a pond, maybe you do this, you've got, it don't have to be one method.
What is, what is Crawford certified at?
They're all certified, they're truly certified by ISO. They did a test to haul, and they hauled eleven hundred gallons at Tolls Creek Road, maybe, nine hundred in one place, seven fifty in another. It's not one set number they got.
How much did they haul at the Cotton Gin?
We had, I was the incident commander late, late there, and while we were having two county hydrants, we probably fed half a million gallons of water off of those two hydrants, we had eight tankers in rotation, Camden, Moyoc, Crawford, everywhere. I had engines, I had engines from Ducks Up and Shores, Kitty Hawk, they were hauling water, you know, it was pretty inefficient, but they were hauling water, we were doing the best we could. But that took a few hours to get in play for that big of a tanker shuttle, and we probably weren't really flowing off of tankers only. I bet you we weren't flowing two thousand gallons of water, actually, probably about a thousand gallons of water a minute for a long time, but it took forty people to make that happen, which took. And the only reason we had so many people in our district is because we had a training program.
Got a training that did.
So we had, we had a huge head start because we had twenty people here with a bunch of apparatus.
And Bill, Bill, what was the least amount for the residential that you required?
Five hundred gallons, and that's based on a separation of thirty feet, more than thirty feet.
So if it's more than thirty feet, and they're all certified at two hundred and fifty, the developer is still going to have to find a way to provide two hundred and fifty gallons of water a minute.
Which means they're going to have to get an engineer. Do you want to build a pond? This has got to be built for a fifty-year drought.
It reduces the size.
It does reduce.
And they may decide to build a pond.
Do we go back and inspect fire ponds?
Do we, but they're responsible to keep up their ISO certification and check up. And typically, we get a maintenance agreement between either homeowner association or developer. I'll give you a perfect example, there is two subdivisions out the end of South Mills Road, there is only one pond, but they're within twenty-five, it's within twenty-five hundred feet of both developments. The same developer developed both of them, so he has an agreement that the fire, Moyoc, can go to either, go to that pond and fight a fire in there. They, but they got the agreement to maintain it. Problem with that is HOA's dissolve, fire departments often have to be the ones going out there weed whacking, doing stuff to keep, so it is, it takes more people to maintain them. They're not the answer, but it is a solution for the developer to be able to develop.
It's part of the equation, I think.
Part of the equation.
I don't think they're the answer, but it gives them, it gives them a chance to develop.
Water is not, has rarely been our problem, right?
I understand, but when you've got the fire code, it's telling you you have that available water source.
Well, that's what we have to go by, I mean, that's what Bill, Bill has to make sure that you have adequate, that the equation adds up. So, you know, it might be two fifty from water shuttling, and the other two fifty, or whatever the remainder comes from fire pond or a cistern, or, you know, but I think the most that he'd be able to sign off on is the two fifty, whatever they're certified to shut.
Yeah, but you're not, that's not a factor. I, I, I'm sorry, that did not, it's rare where you're going to require, according to that, more than two fifty.
No, the minimum you'll require is five hundred.
I, okay, we're talking about two fifty, the five hundred minus two fifty, two fifty. That's extremely rare because the places that are, that this comes into play, the houses are far further apart than thirty feet.
See, I mean, most cases, you just have to find the extra two hundred and fifty gallons a minute.
Yeah, okay, the development that this could impact, it's going to be so.
But it gives options. I mean, that was the direction from the board at the retreat, was to, to give the options, and this is the best we can, this is the best we can do, so.
You know, I'm not, I'm not the guy out there saying sprinkler, sprinkler, but residential sprinkler system can be installed by a plumber that's certified. The average cost on a two thousand square foot house, my understanding is anywhere from thirty-five hundred to forty-five hundred dollars. It doesn't need much maintenance, because every time you flush your commode, it's a loop system, it works through the system, so, but it's a hard sell for anybody, you know what I mean? It will do.
We've seen it tested in, I've seen it in other jurisdictions.
If somebody suggested that to me versus digging a pond, I said, yeah, that's the way to go. And I think they would body that versus.
Sprinkler system?
Residential sprinkler.
Because it gives them, it does give fire departments a huge head start.
It gives them a start, controls the fire so they can get there and do their job. So it's something to think about, but.
If they do it, that's something we can't require.
Yeah, but once again, so all these are options, the way that this text amendment is written, you know.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I got a question. The third lot is the trigger for the fire pond.
It's the trigger for the, for the, to meet the fire code.
Fire flow.
Fire code, yeah.
What if somebody had five lots, and it's ruled there's no county water, and then he puts the sprinklers, it's been all five of them.
Well, he'd have to figure that out before he did the third lot.
Yeah. But he'd be good, that person? I mean, I'm just, I'm throwing that out there, I'm just.
What we've done, you know, when you talk to the state, when I've talked to the state, basically as soon as you sub, subdivide a line, you're really opening the fire code. Previous fire marshal, through the state's guidance, looked at it as, if you give them the first two lots, and you've told them about it, they've had a chance to make some money to do something by the third lot. And his, James, his son, he looked at it away, he was totally go back to nineteen ninety-one, but he went back to twenty fourteen, when he learned that he should be doing all this, and he took it from that date and went forward. Anything that was plotted after those dates, would have to meet the code. They have to meet for fire road access, water supply. We've been doing that in the UDO, and the UDO's been calling out for this time now. We run into those. Now, we run into a situation, mainly it's East Ridge Road, where we've had a couple 10-acre lots. 10-acre lot subdivisions are exempt from zoning forms subdivision. They're not exempt from the state building code and state fire code. That's the hard thing for them to understand, is they think they're exempt, but they're not exempt from the building code. If that's the case, they don't need to build a division, they just have to build a house.
But like I said, the direction from the board at the retreat was to give options. This really opens up the playbook for folks to choose from, so.
Okay. What next, Mr. Beaumont?
Oh, I move for approval. Is public comment closed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. All right, um, yep, well, I had Ryan signed up, so we'll close public comment. And any further discussion from the board? We've had lots of discussion on this. I think they talked. Okay, um, you did make a motion.
Oh, no, I was willing to, but...
You should move to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve PB 2007 because the request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policy of the 2006 land use plan, including policy WS4. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest. Period.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Uh, does that, is that the language the planning board proposed, or is that the original?
That's what they proposed.
So you're going with the planning board recommendation?
Removal.
Because there were two separate recommendations. The staff specifically called out mobile water supply, and the planning board struck that specific out, and then just kind of left it with any alternative means approved by the fire code.
Do I have that? No. So it's right here.
With the proposed text amendments as proposed by staff.
So this is the staff's recommendation?
Yep.
Okay, so the staff's recommendation.
All right, I'll second the staff's recommendation.
I think you have to remove your initial second.
I'll remove my initial second.
You're amending your...
Amended my...
To include that, okay.
To include, I'll second.
Thank you.
The amended.
Okay.
You got all that, Leigh Anne?
Yeah.
All right, before she loses it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it carries unanimously, all right. I'm lost now. All right, next item on the agenda, after our clerk gets, uh, I get the thumbs up from her. You ready? Okay. All right, item E, PB 19-25, Kirtuk County. Kirtuk Station requests to amend the unified development ordinance, Chapter 1, general provisions, Chapter 2, administration, uh, Chapter 3, zoning districts, Chapter 4, U standards, Chapter 5, development standards, Chapter 6, subdivision infrastructure standards, and Chapter 10, definitions and measurements for the purpose of implementing the Moyoc mega site master plan, PK Kirtuk Station, and establishing the planned development, Kirtuk Station District and Regulations. Ms. Valba's coming back to us again.
So, at the board meeting in February, oh, we discussed and went over each of the text amendment, both the text amendment and the pattern book. Made the presentation, went page by page, I will spare you that tonight. At the conclusion of that presentation, the Board of Commissioners requested that we hold a work session, which we held earlier this evening with WPA, who worked with the county on developing the pattern book. And where I'd like to pick up, if that's okay with the board, is at the staff comments, you know, we met with the stakeholder group, collected their comments, and most of those are pulled into these staff comments. There were some concerns about one of the locations and the separation between Center Station District and Newtown District. It didn't align with property lines, and the road could be shifted, and one of the property owners was concerned, like, what sub-district am I in? What, what density allocation am I allowed? What's my commercial standard, that type of thing? So what we recommend with that is either shift the sub-district line, either the charter sub-district to include those lands in the Newtown District, just take it all in, all the way down to Lazy Corner Road, which is a known, um, road and a known stopping point. Modify the table for the Newtown District. That would allow us to put it more in line with some of the, the properties that are in charter. Or make no change at this time and elect to update and amend at the time of rezoning. So that, those are the three options, you could pick one of those. There were some corrections that we requested in the pattern book and some image updates for the sub-districts, we asked that that be included as well. And remove some of the suggested materials for the sub-district. And that was more of a concern, um, by some of the, the proposed developers. They're concerned that that pattern book would become more regulatory in nature, as WPA spoke to tonight. That is not the intent of the pattern book, it is a guide to begin conversation with someone who would be developing in that area. So we will leave that up to the board, I'm just putting that up there, if you, um, if you choose to adopt the language, you, you can leave the, the materials for those sub-districts, what that means, those suggested materials, type of siding, type of shingles, type of materials that you would typically see. And again, it's a suggested document to begin conversation.
And that's in the pattern?
That's in the pattern book. And then to provide some traditional architecture for building form elevations in Center Station and Charter Subdistrict, some of the stakeholders were concerned about the, uh, simple architecture that was being proposed, some of it termed coastal or beachy, and wanted more of what you typically see, uh, in today's commercial development, and it would look more like that. Leave that up to the board. We have language that is included in the text that would allow for this type of construction. It is up to the board if you want to see elevations such as this in the pattern book.
So that is currently not in the pattern book, is that correct?
The images are not in the pattern book because it doesn't reflect that historical architecture that, that they spoke to earlier. The language that would allow you to, to do that type of construction is written into the text of the order.
Okay. And can you go back to your previous slide where you had your staff comments? So, um, it seems to me if we adopt this, that we probably should shift the lines now to avoid any confusion later. So anyone looking at the pattern book, everything's lined up, there's no, well, wait a minute, this isn't, why isn't this jiving? Just my two cents on that.
So the, the, under the first staff comment, that's actually not something in the pattern book. The first staff comment, where you've got option 1, 2, and 3, is where the line would actually lay on the plan.
Let me go back to...
It's, is there a laser on that thing? Will it show up?
So...
It is.
How about that? So this boundary line right here, if you notice, there is, it doesn't completely align with the street that is on this side. And the property line is more in line with that street. So a portion of the property is in Center Station, a portion is in Newtown. The option would be to, let me go back one more. It's kind of hard to tell on this one, but Lazy Corner Road comes in right around this area. You can move Center Station all the way down to that area. On the, on the sub-district map, you could, uh, change more of the code as it relates to development in Newtown.
I'm going to jump in real quick, if that's okay. Really, in this case, normally I would never say this, this case, option 3 might be the best option.
Okay.
Because of the fact that until people come with projects, these lines are going to move a little.
They are.
Okay, all right.
You're always going to suggest, let's wait till we get some interest or activity.
Yeah, we would, we would bring a project to you if it, if some of it was in the Newtown District, but it wanted to be Center Station, we're going to bring it to you and say, well, it's, you just move the line.
I would say let's wait to see what's going to...
And you know somebody might bring in a project that includes all Center Station and a portion of the site, and they might want to move the lines.
Yeah.
We understand that, that is anticipated.
And that's what we talked about initially in this, is that this could change depending on who wants it.
It would be part of the rezoning application, and that's, that's part of the reason why we have, Ben said, option 3 might make the most sense. Make no change now and evaluate it as a project comes.
Yeah, because right now, we don't have any projects that are...
Well, let's wait to see who comes to the table then.
Yeah. But we'll, we can cross that bridge once a, once a project.
And as you're talking to them, you can tell, hey, this is, you know, adjustable.
And we, we've explained that to folks when they've come in and ask questions, that it's... And so I think the other staff comments are really based around the pattern book,
They are.
which as we talked about, doesn't have any regulatory power, it's... It's just a starting point for the developer to...
And we're going to, we're going to correct the errors in there anyway, so I don't really necessarily think that that's something you need to worry about.
Yeah, we talked about flexibility tonight on everything, why lock ourselves into it tonight?
Yeah.
So, uh, with that final comment, I will go to the staff recommendation. We recommend approval of this text amendment. With the, any of the suggested changes that the board may see needs to be included in this, and because it is consistent with the land use plan policies, I won't go through and read all of those, but there they are. AG 3, um, HM 3, CD 8, CW 1, small area plan policies, uh, CC 1, y'all work good? Okay. And then that the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the Moyoc Small Area Plan identifies this area as an employment activity center. The 2016 feasibility study serves as a guide for potential land use demands, and it addresses a demonstrated community need by implementing the Small Area Plan and the Mega Site Master Plan, which was a long-term vision for a mixed-use development of approximately 3,500 acres of land strategically positioned to serve as a connective center between Virginia and Carolina resulting in a logical and orderly development pattern. If you have any answer, any questions, you may have.
Kevin?
I have one.
Okay.
Now, when we talked about this before, like, we were keeping the PDMs or whatever, and like the PDRs?
That's a really good question, Kevin, because the text that you have, the text amendment, with some of those changes with the PDM, the PDR, and, uh, changing some of the densities in there, that suggests that it will stay. You will hear Monday night, I believe it is, a text amendment to remove the PDR zoning district. So, um, this text amendment includes the PDR changes, but you may be making some additional changes on Monday night.
So if, if you adopted this and you adopt the change that came out of the retreat, removing PDRs next week, then essentially the only PDRs that would be allowed are what's called a PDRCS, is that right?
Yeah, that was, what was it?
So that's PDR Kirtuk Station.
Yeah.
So...
Right.
What was something at the planning board where they had the other night? Because I watched the thing, it was PDRs, south or something, didn't they approve hers?
They have asked, um, because they, they want to hinder development in the lower end of the county, take that tool, out of the toolbox of the lower end of the county, they have asked that we, and this is going to come up with the, and next, next month.
That might be a little early, sorry.
They have, they, they have asked that they, that we look at drafting PD, uh, planned development, that is simply called out toward the lower part of the town, south side.
If somebody brought something out?
Yeah.
That might resemble PDL.
That might resemble PDL.
Because like the P, the PDM, the mixed use or whatever is the...
PDM mixed use where you're at 35% residential.
That, that will stay.
That stays.
PDL would stay, PDL out of bank, replacing plug would be PDM, angle, and mixed use where you have, you're only allowed 35% residential. And then the planned development, Kirtuk Station, PD slash CES, those would be the only, if this is enacted and if you act on Monday night, that would be the only, I mean, planned developments that are allowed.
Eligible.
Now, and then if we did bring back language as directed, as asked by the planning board, then it could be, that's not separate.
Yeah, we're not, yeah.
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet, because that would need to be a whole other...
Maybe.
PDRs do not require any commercial, does it?
No, but it's, it's only allowed 85% of, of the same type of development.
Residential housing type.
Yeah, you have to have a very, make some multi-family, do what, or do not require
So why not keep the PDM and raise the residential opsum for South Indiania County instead of creating a whole new district?
Well, didn't we talk about that last time? That's why I was...
Well, we're keeping the PDM, like, it's out of the retreat, we're getting, we're getting layoff Kirtuk Station.
I mean, like I said, I was, the only thing I was asking was...
Let's tackle this next Monday.
We can do that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, if it comes out of here, it comes out of here.
The only, the only change to PDR tonight was to eliminate the limited service allowances, which is, which was, if you were in a limited service area, it was 1.5 dwelling units per acre, it forces all of the planned developments to occur in full service, which is where you want them.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. All right. Any more questions for staff? All right, um, I will open the public comment, and I don't have anyone signed up, would anyone like to speak to this tonight? See, no one come forward, I'll close the public comment. Any further discussion from the board on this? Open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I will move to approve PB 19-25 because the request is consistent with the land use plan, Moyoc Small Area Plan, and Moyoc Mega Site Master Plan. I'd like to include the staff comments with option 3 being the option that we will utilize. Land Use Plan Policy AG 3 encourages the county to direct new development to targeted growth areas near existing development identified as full-service areas. Land Use Plan Policy HM 3 encourages the county to provide for mixed-use developments to promote self-supporting community centers provided by centralized water and sewer contemplated for full-service areas. Land Use Policy CD 8 encourages mixed-use developments that are properly planned from the outset and allows for a compatible mixture of residential and non-residential uses with a pedestrian scale and design. Land Use Plan Policy CW 1, I mean CW 1, recognizes small area plans and allows for incorporation into the land use plan as needed for citizen-initiated amendments or county-led planning efforts for changing demographic, economic, or environmental conditions. MSAP supplements the land use plan to more specifically address the needs and issue of the study area and establishes a new focus for growth and development. MSAP adopted in 2014 identified this area as an employment activity area. MSAP Policy CC 1 encourages and fosters development that is compatible with rural atmosphere, transition areas, and a small-town Main Street feel that is consistent with the vision, policies, and future land use plan. MSAP Policy CC 2 encourages... MSAP Policy CC two encourages non-residential and mixed-use development that enhances the community's appearance, promotes human scale, and creates a unique sense of place including common theme building materials, forms, and site amenities. MSAP Policy ST one promotes establishing a area dedicated to community-serving businesses that fosters a small-town main street feel. MSAP Policy B twelve encourages a well-planned mixed-use development with a range of intensities and diverse housing types and carefully located to areas supported by the future land use map and adequately served by infrastructure and county services. MSAP Action FLU two A explores establishment of a community-centered district and associated sub-districts that implement division in the policies of the plan creating development standards specific to the Mayotte Study Area. MSAP Action CC two A is to develop regulations and incentives for non-residential and mixed-use development that establish design standards specific to each activity center in the plan. MSAP Action CC three B is to amend the UDO to create regulations that enhance public investment into entryways. MSAP Action B one three B is to develop regulations or incentives that require large-scale residential development that utilizes centralized sewer to include a supporting non-residential component and interconnection to existing businesses. Mayotte Megasite Master Plan and Figure ES one, ES dash one. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the Mayotte Small Area Plan adopted in two thousand fourteen identified this area as an employment activity area. The two thousand sixteen feasibility study served as the guide for potential land use demands. It addresses a demonstrated community need because the master plan development process was designed to produce a market-driven plan responsive to projected demand for a mix of land uses specific to the local market informed by regional influences. Lastly, it addresses a demonstrated community need by implementing the Mayotte Small Area Plan and the Mayotte Megasite Master Plan a long-term vision for mixed-use development for approximately thirty-five hundred acres that is strategically positioned to serve as a connective center between the Commonwealth of Virginia and the state of North Carolina resulting in logical and orderly development patterns.
Alright, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? Are all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, here's none, carry your own slate, thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, um, before you move to the next item, I meant to mention this earlier. We tried to, uh, live stream our meeting tonight on Facebook. Um, so folks who couldn't be here could watch it, cause we don't have the ability to do it on the, um, peg channel, like we normally do. We weren't able to pull that off, the audio didn't work so well, so we had to cancel the Facebook live stream. However, we're recording the meeting, and so people will be able to watch it on YouTube in the next two to three days, probably. So just wanted to make the board Uh, it's not right now. We tried it, and we got a lot of complaints about the audio.
I got a bunch of text messages saying they couldn't hear it.
Yeah, so instead of just letting it run on, we just canceled the live feed. But people will be able to watch the meeting in a couple of days on YouTube.
So we can cut this off.
No, he's still, that's still what is, uh, working up there.
He's recording.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna make sure you all are aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Alright, uh, next item, new business, item A, consideration of a facility use contractor jump operations in Currituck County.
And our airport manager, William Nelson, uh, present this.
Alright.
Well, I, I try to keep this as brief as I can, uh, since it's getting a little late. So, uh, I'm here to provide a little information about, uh, requests from Navy SEALs regarding parachute operations at the Currituck Airport. Uh, the Navy SEALs have requested to utilize Currituck Airport, uh, for parachute operations. The current request is to utilize the airfield for a minimum of twelve days in July for an advanced parachute course with the intentions of requesting Currituck County to be a permanent location for their parachute training. Uh, they will be bringing a contract aircraft to fly the jumpers, uh, dropping the jumpers twice an hour, uh, for six to eight hours a day, and possibly a few night jumps as well. They will have a large group in this course, likely having two airplanes flying. The jump zone they will, uh, like to use is a grass area between our, uh, parallel taxiway and runway. Uh, the benefit for the airport is a fuel sale that will come from the operation. Uh, Currituck County Airport, uh, has a drop zone survey that was done, uh, several years back, that was completed before the parallel taxiway uh, was, with, project was finished. So the area designated on the survey is now inside the taxiway obstacle-free zone. And with the intentions of landing parallel to the runway is also inside of the obstacle-free zone for the runway. With that being said, allowing this operation would require the airport to note on the runway for parachute operations. And with the jumpers landing in the grass beside the runway, we would have to keep traffic from landing on the runway until jumpers could clear the obstacle-free zone. Additionally, when jumpers exit the aircraft, all aircraft in the pattern will have to exit the pattern and remain clear until jumpers are on the ground. Uh, many jet charter companies have stated that airports with jump operations and only one runway available will plan their trip to a neighboring airport if available to avoid uh, risk of, of jump operation and inconvenience of remaining clear of the airport during the jumper's air, the time in the air. So I looked around at, uh, other airports similar to us in size, um, to compare us, the Lewisburg Airport, North Raleigh Airport, uh, they have the same orientation runway, five and two-three, uh, similar airfield, but it does have an open grass area that is, that is an obstacle-free zone and it's a thousand foot away from the runway. Uh, this airfield is, uh, able to accommodate jumpers and airplane traffic at the same time because of the additional space located, uh, at a safe distance from the runway. Uh, Currituck Airport simply does not have enough space to accommodate, uh, the jump operation and local traffic without having to limit uh, our airport operations during the time of the jump. And I, I looked at Mr. Snipe, other for any additional, uh, information he wants to add.
Obviously, we, we're trying to find a way to facilitate this, but it causes some really big impacts to, to the airport's operations. And, and I think that maybe there's a representative here with the, the contractor. Um, so if you all have any questions for, for them, they are here. The only other thing that I could think of, and we talked about this a little bit today, is the ability, it was not an issue with the plane landing and taking off at the airport. The issue is the parachutes coming in. And so is there a way to facilitate the jump happening somewhere else? And then shuttling the folks back to the airport, and that might not be worth the trouble for the contractor, but
Didn't they do it a couple of years ago?
They say they used to do it.
Yeah.
We used to have folks jump in here.
That was, John Harris had a jump school there or something.
I don't know, but
Yeah.
Flying in here with jumpers in the air was a pain in the neck. Um, I mean, it just
Yeah, so I mean, it, it's a
Well, when, as he was talking, one of my thoughts is, how about one of the lots or the out parcels? I mean, a bunch of them are fields.
Well, I mean, you've got, I mean, the one that, well, the one that came to mind, I mean, I don't know, first thing about jump training, so that's where I'm gonna say that this gentleman back here can probably answer more questions than I can. You've got, um, out parcels, you've got even the grassy area, and large, you've got, you know, near the soccer fields. Uh, I mean, right there, um, there's also probably a lot of fallow out agricultural land that would
Well, don't leave, leave behind the
That's Kitty Hawk, that's Kites. Kitty Hawk Kites does their thing there, but I don't think they could land and
They can't land the fixed wing aircraft.
Yeah, and I think the challenge they have is
Would burn
You said about shuttling, you know, have them go off somewhere and shuttle them back to you.
Yeah. I mean, obviously if that's eaten, I don't even know if that's an option for me.
I know a guy that owns the property right across the road.
Come on, come on up and
How big?
Which one?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Johnny Riddle, I, uh, I work in naval special work, another old group. I am active duty and not a contractor, so, uh, I have jumped in here. The difference between what we've done in the past and what we're looking at doing in the future. Recently, up in, uh, Virginia Beach, Suffolk.
Up in Virginia Beach, uh
That made such a difference.
Up in Suffolk, our, our DZ shut down, right? So right now, we don't have, uh, any drop zones locally that we can land at. So, long story short, uh, we need to be able to train locally within about an hour, hour and a half distance from Virginia Beach. There's very few airfields, um, that we can do it. Uh, we can land, jump elsewhere, but there's a lot of wasted time that we don't have to go back and forth to the municipal airport, load, reload our parachutes, and then take back again. Uh, for the, uh, the two weeks in July, just so you understand, uh, the operation that we would do is, uh, in a day would do eight jumps, there'd be about ten to fifteen packs, and, um, at this course, it would be the, the most experienced jumpers at the command. Um, so, uh, they're, they're working for an advanced qualification, so figure ten to fifteen packs, eight lifts a day. It would be roughly two to three refuels, um, at the airport. Um, we do the majority of our jump training, uh, out in Arizona, other places around the, the nation, but just because our our local DZ shut down, that's why we're here looking for sustained training.
I'm gonna ask a couple of questions, if that's alright, cause, yeah.
Just make them small.
So how far, what's the distance from the airport where you start to lose efficiency if you had to shuttle people?
Once we're not on the airport, you're losing efficiency.
So I mean, and so is there a break-even point for like where it's, it's, this is acceptable, but this is probably not worth your time?
There is, um, but a lot has to do with everything from, uh, security, uh, to, uh, air traffic. There, there's a lot of go, lots that, that go on on picking specific airfields than just, uh, you know, municipal, you know, municipal airports.
See, the concern is you've picked probably the busiest month at our airport with exec jets coming in and out. And they got guys, I mean, they're in Gulfstreams and they're in high-dollar equipment. And having to, you know, go into a holding pattern, waiting for your jumpers to clear is bad, right? So, and, and I can probably speak for the board, we'd love to have you come here. And it's just, how can we figure it out? Um, what, what size CASA?
Yeah, it would be a CASA two-twelve or twin odder, sir. Uh, you know, we obviously have direct communications between the DZSO crew, which is, uh, you know, uh, by itself just a, a pretty big crew on the ground that manages, um, everything from, uh, medical to communications. So we have it to the aircraft, we have it, you know, to the open net, you know, with aircraft coming in. We've worked, uh, multiple airports across the country and, you know, we make sure, you know, we're, we're, we've got the right spacing between aircraft.
And, and how long are they in the
It, it all depends, so if there's aircraft come in and we won't even take off, um, unless we need to.
I mean, what altitude are you guys jumping out at?
Twelve thousand five, twelve five.
A long time. And it's not a halo, right?
It is halo, so it's right over the top for the, uh, sustained training that we'd be doing here.
Okay, so when do they, they pop shoots?
About four thousand, sir.
And how long do the ground from there?
Uh, roughly three minutes or so.
So total, total out the door on the ground, fifteen minutes?
Top, no, you're talking, um, about four and a half minutes, sir. From exit of aircraft to on the ground.
Cause we don't want it to be like, really no time, cause that's bad.
Yep.
Alright.
During the, uh, July, two weeks, there will not be any nights. So we're, we've done in the past, we've done night operations into here, and it would be like a one or two jump and then done for the day. What we're trying to do here is get a qualification, so guys just, uh, jumping out of the aircraft right over the top, coming down, doing a quick, uh, a quick debrief, loading the aircraft, and then doing it again. I told
At not.
We would not, not for the July course.
Could you do a helicopter and hover over an address if we gave it to you?
What kind of guy am I?
He and Salino when he said that.
So, um, I pulled up an aerial, so that we can kinda
Yep, that's what I was
Have a discussion about, um, if there's any spots that might make sense, so. The, the large spot beside the ponds is a valid landfill, so you don't wanna jump there.
So, just riding around today, just looking at things before coming out here. The lot is cleared, uh, for, um, on the backside of the pond, uh, make pond and back.
For BEI?
Yeah. Is that, I mean, how much distance do you guys need to make the drop?
And so he's talking about that clea, you're talking about that cleared lot?
Just out of the pond?
Yeah.
It's It's not even a half mile, I mean, it's
Oh, it's, yeah, mainly
It's like a quarter mile back to the
Not that, but, don't, keep coming.
Right.
No, give me the
Give me the stinking
This one right here.
That, that, okay.
So it's this parcel of land. So to give you kind of a, a reference of scope, this is the building we're in right now. So, I mean, it's, it aside from the beef of Miami.
So, so I'm gonna be straight up, like, we have, uh, our air force, uh, counterparts that do the, uh, drop zone surveys. I'd, I'd have to get out there and actually say yes or no, um, because I've, I've been with them on, on several of these. Long story short, i- if we're able to do this July course with the recommendation of doing, uh, what's actually surveyed on, uh, the airstrip, that, that's what I'm talking about here. If it's anything else in that, it's just gonna take a lot more time for our approval process, um, to get something else approved, so
The
I do appreciate it, and we very well probably look into it in the future, but a, at least for the July course, that's kind of what
Yeah, it's too close.
My focus is.
When you open back up, you can go back there?
A- and this is, this is what I told Mr. Nelson, like, I right now is a short-term fix, that's what we need, is a short-term fix. So I, I would like to use July as a potential proof of concept, does this make sense? Can we work with what you guys had going on here? Yes or no? Um, I, I feel my DZ crew, um, is confident, um, comfortable enough to work with your crew, just as long as you guys are willing, just gotta be a little bit flexible with us, because we know, um, we'll be, you know, spending some, some aircraft time and just working with the flow of aircraft in the area here. But we have the most experienced jumpers. This, if, if there's ever a time, this would be the time for, for our command, you know, potentially try this out.
And I'll tell you, coming into the airport with guys that jumped high and, and hit the silk, high, was a pain in the neck because it took them forever to get on the ground. And you, you know, you can't come into the pattern until they're clear. And the comms were always miserable in the past, I mean, they were always miserable. You didn't know where they were, when they were, and so, I mean, so are, so all the jumps are halo?
All the jumps are halo, right, no night, sir.
Like I said, the impact, and, and you pointed it out, i- is, it is our, probably our busiest month, I'm guessing July's. Um, and, and hopefully will be busier because of what we were talking about, that occupancy hopefully will be up in July, so
So I could also say, before I left the airport today, just over fifteen days, uh, in, uh, June here, that I added up how many aircraft we've had just from last Monday till, uh, yesterday. Uh, how many jets we had, we had over twenty jets last week coming to the airport. So, now, with, with saying that, we count jets as departures and arrivals. Sometimes we saw the same jet twice a day, but they left somewhere with passengers and came back with passengers.
Um, are there, do we have good days of the week, bad days of the week? Do you only have certain days of the week that you guys are jumping?
So, I mean, typically, it's hard, it's hard to tell, it depends on when people are coming down for vacation.
No, I get it.
So, uh, when, whenever they got their rental or whenever they're coming to their home.
Which is typically a Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
The, the jets, though, I don't think track that way, cause if these, I mean, these are folks who, they're, a lot of these are homeowners who are coming down, some of them in midweek because the families come down on the
Yeah, but that's a, I, and I don't know, you know better than I do, but that's typically a onesie twosie, that's not the, the our busiest days are on the weekend, or at least
Saturday and Sunday, I mean, Saturday we had, we dropped that, so, alone, so that's, that's less than normal.
So what, what days of the week are you guys looking at?
Monday to Friday, sir. So, yeah.
Well, it depends on weather.
Well, it depends on weather. I, I mean, they.
I mean, ju- just for our air contracts, we have contracts that, that we've already submitted, and it's Monday through Fridays, those two weeks, so.
So look, well, that brings up an interesting point, because there's a double layer to this. So the only way that they would be able to do this is actually to have a concession agreement with the airport. We don't have a concession agreement right now for you guys to approve, but we could turn one around for the 22nd, because that's going to be such a quick meeting.
I'm going to rely on the airport expert here, because I have no idea, you know, if he says yes, but if he says no, then.
So I'll, I'll speak, I mean, we've had conversations, it will impact the folks who use our airport, and then, and we might not lose a handful, but I mean, there is the potential to lose.
What's the long-term allocations if they get bad?
They go find another airport.
Question is, where else can they go?
It takes one bad experience. A jet?
I'd never want to risk that, one bad experience.
Jets could go to Elizabeth City. Uh, they can't, Manio's tougher, because they've got a lot of operations at Manio, like the banner flying and stuff like that, that.
They have jump operations there as well, so.
Yeah, they tend to not go to Manio as much, but Elizabeth City's an easy one. Say what?
No, I mean, Kirtuk County, the airport, and I think pilots are starting to see, it was funny before I came here that pilots didn't know where Kirtuk County was. When I talked with them, I said, you're going to the beach, why do you fly to Kirtuk County? Where is that airport? They didn't know where it was. Now they're starting to understand where the closest airport to the Outer Bank, the longest runway, offering the best facility. So, and, and like I say, it takes one bad experience. If my, if my restrooms aren't clean in the FBO when they get off the jet, they may not come back to our facility just because of that.
Still let them use the restroom on the, the airfield.
I don't know if that's worth the risk, though, for what we've been trying to do with that airport right now, just giving it up. Yeah, I, I appreciate it, I just, what we've been, what we've been trying to do and get more and more flights in there, if this could jeopardize it, I just don't feel comfortable with doing that.
And I would add to that, we do have 56 base aircraft at Kirtuk Airport, including the airport on the other side. So that's 56 county citizens that are utilizing this airport, that are based here, and got to think a little bit about their opinion on this matter. I've, I've just heard in the past their opinion of, of jump operations.
Oh, listen, I'm, I'm telling you, I, I lived it, it was miserable. That and hang gliders.
It hinders the flow of traffic. That's the only, and, and like I said, I referenced Raleigh Executive, and it's a good airport reference. They're set up for it, the way their, their jump zone is, they do right pattern. Even here, if we changed the pattern, which we could, it wouldn't matter because of our, because of where the drop zone is, it wouldn't make a difference.
It's a shame you didn't drop some wheels down and just land it down, yeah.
So if the land beside the airport that is wooded, where we usually have our debris site, was clear, it'd be a perfect location for it, it would be out of the way. But the issue is, is landing parallel to the runway is an extreme risk.
Well, I think it's something that if we work together, if you, if you need something a little longer term, we can probably find some options that, that don't impact the airport that way, but I think the challenge is the short term.
Right now, it's just going to be hard to.
Hopefully in the summer.
Yeah, we don't have a.
So pass, pass the new, pass the new ramp. Is that still?
So, one of their other representatives who came out to meet with me, we did ride the airfield, so I could get an idea, because we were looking at, you know, area, which not up to date, even on that one. So we rode around and talked, I said, hey, this would be the ideal spot, but the issue is there's power lines. They want to steer clear with the power lines, because he said that.
Hey, it's real-world training.
Yeah.
You got to get in, you got to get in, just miss the power line.
And, and our C hangars, if we're not there when, when this survey is done, so that's, it, it kind of hinders that.
And Ben's guy would do that, maybe, maybe it doesn't work right now, but maybe we can work out something and.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, from a county standpoint, if we can work out something even in the, I'm going to say this as nicely as I can, our lots in there aren't just flying off the shelf, so, I mean, it's something that potentially is available.
Way to, way to throw that out.
So.
Yeah, but, but.
No, I, I appreciate it, sir.
Yeah.
I, I totally get your guys' viewpoint, I definitely appreciate the time that we're able to get from you, at least, at least pigeon and hopefully in the future we can work something out.
Yeah.
How big an acreage do you need for drops?
And it, and it depends on.
Skill level.
Yeah, the skill level, so.
And the, and the type jump.
It does, so the group in July, you know, most experienced jumpers would be committed in this group, but I'm always going off the most basic, you know, guys.
Ouch.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for sitting through the meeting.
Oh, my gosh. Dude, dude, you are a klutten. We should have bumped him up.
Uh, okay, we'll take a brief five-minute recess. Call the meeting back in order. Uh, all right, moving on, item B, consent agenda.
For approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, all favor? Aye. All right, um, let their journal.
Re, well.
We have to, no.
Recess this meeting.
Yeah, recess the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners and open a special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority. We have a public hearing and possible adaptation of the Tourism Development Authority budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. And at this time, just going to open the public comment for this, I do not have anyone signed up this evening. There's no one left in the audience, so I'm going to assume that we don't have anyone to speak on this. And I'll close the public comment and move to have this adopted at our June 22nd, possible adoption at our June 22nd meeting.
So moved.
Second.
They had it.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so am I recessing that?
You only adjourn this meeting now, you got to take a motion to adjourn the TDA meeting.
Uh, Mike, I move, I move to, I made the motion, he's second. Um, all right, so can I have a motion to adjourn that meeting, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, all favor? Aye. All right, at this time, I'll open a special meeting in Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District. Public hearing and possible adoption of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. Same thing on this one. Open public comment, no one is here or signed up, close public comment, and make a motion to.
So moved.
Hang on. Easy there, big fella.
You said best.
Move to have this item have possible action on our June 22nd Board of Commissioner meetings.
So moved.
Second that? All right, Kevin seconded that, and all in favor? Aye. All right, and may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. And at this time, I will, uh, get my other piece of paper out here. Move to open close session pursuant to GS 143-318-1183 to preserve attorney-client privilege. Matters Kirtuk v. Latandra and Kirtuk v. CASA and Paradise Homes, Inc.